Okay, we're going to convene now. If everybody could... We are going to call to order this regular meeting of the Board of Trustees for Tuesday, September 25, 2018. And will the clerk please call the roll?
Katie Simon-Holland.
Here.
Scott Kelly.
Here.
John Mayer here. Melina Raymond.
Here.
Angela Taylor.
Here.
And our student representative, Anante. Glad to have you. She had a tough election, but she came through with shining colors. So she's our permanent representative from the students.
And we welcome you, Anante. All right. Nath Anderson, would you lead us in the pledge? Oh, you knew I was going to do that, didn't you?
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. JJ, would you please call for public comment?
John Appolito.
Mr. Appolito, welcome. You have three minutes, as you know.
Hi, my name is John Appolito. I'm a former K-12 teacher. I have three kids left in the district, and I'm the president of Protect Nevada Children. For three years, Protect Nevada Children has been warning this board about the free ed-tech vendors. We and many others have pointed out to you the reason they are free is because they are collecting student data. Over those three years, what's happened is this: One, last year, one of the district's most widely-used free ed-tech vendors, Edmodo, had a data breach where student emails, student usernames, student IDs, and hashed passwords were stolen and placed for sale on the dark web. More handouts. This summer, Edmodo was sold to the Chinese company, government, don't know what the difference is. Many experts, here's three of them, have written why the company was sold to the Chinese. It's for the student data. Including the student profiles, Edmodo has spent creating on children for three years, well, more than three years, without parental consent or knowledge. Cal Berkeley released a study this summer showing that many of the ed-tech vendors used in our schools are illegally tracking children. The study pointed out that it's difficult to police, and that no one has been even able to charge these people, let alone prosecute them. Some more handouts. The FBI says some of the same things we've been telling this board for years. Not only is this board refusing to educate parents on all aspects of using free ed-tech products, about 10 days ago, My News 4 aired a story carefully orchestrated by the district about Edmodo's data breach. That was a year and a half after the fact. The story was very misleading, skirted the truth, and omitted the most relevant facts. And most importantly, proved the district will go to great lengths to not educate parents on all aspects of using free ed-tech vendors. That story and our reply, Protect Nevada Children, can be viewed on our Facebook page, which is Protect Nevada Children. It's going to be the pinned post as soon as I go sit down. Reminder, our board has always been 50/50. And what I mean is, half Democrats, half Republicans. For three years, we've been saying the same thing. Please educate parents on all aspects of using free ed-tech vendors, and let them decide if they want their children using them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Appolito. And just to share with folks, we do have, the district did post a significant amount of information, including the FBI public service announcement, and that is on our webpage. I'm looking for the page number. It's www.washauschools.net, page 12087. Thank you, Mr. Appolito. JJ, next.
I found the FBI story.
Mr. Appolito, you're finished.
It took three clicks to get there, and that's because I was looking for it.
It does not take three clicks. I got there in one. JJ?
Margaret Martini.
Welcome, Mrs. Martini.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone here. Well, once again, the board members have been caught with their pants down, even after three years of warnings by numerous people at numerous meetings. Your opening statements at the last board meeting were unequivocally incorrect, spinning at its best form. But now, there is no more incorrect statements to be made because the FBI has ratted you all out. It is disconcerting that you and all your fancy resources and legal counsel did not find this out, or pay attention to those of us who did find it out until it was way too late. Now, this board has been educated, in a way, you're playing God, by asking students without educating parents to share information that will be used by others, including foreign entities, to create very rich profiles on our children that will affect their future. We understand that the increased use of technology is part of the district's strategic plan, but as new information is presented, intelligent people make adjustments, right? If you want students to get ready for the jobs of the 21st century, why don't you teach tech? Teach them to be producers of technology, not consumers. We are not going against technology, just the opposite. We would love to see the district do what is done in the country of Estonia, where all students learn coding, computer programming, in the first grade. It is your responsibility to teach them useful material. Teaching gender cross-dressing is not useful. What you are actually doing is having children sit in front of a computer, one to three hours per day, and share an incredible amount of personal data with free vendors who are using the kid's data, and you are not informing the parents. The website is not informing the parents. You need to be stronger in informing the parents. Please educate parents on all aspects of using the free third-party vendors, excuse me, and let them decide if they want their children using them. This is a parent's decision. This is not yours. You need to have them, first and foremost, opt in, not opt out, because you made the decision to do this.
Thank you, Ms. Martini. And I will state that we will agree to disagree about our understanding of various statements made.
Alan Cunningham.
Welcome, Mr. Cunningham.
Good afternoon, President Simon-Holland, members of the board, Superintendent Davis. My name is Alan Cunningham. I am currently the Information Security Officer for Washoe County School District. I have over 30 years' experience in technology and information security. I am also a Certified Information System Security Professional, a globally-recognized certification attesting to an IT security professional's technical skills, experience in implementing and managing information and cybersecurity programs. WCSD is a 21st-century district, preparing our students for a 21st-century workplace. Giving students experience with the tools required to be successful in the modern world is our duty as educators. Keeping students safe while they learn to be productive contributors to our world is a high priority for us. While no information system is 100% secure, we have three information security staff members who monitor, assess, and test the security of WCSD's information. We also have almost 70 other information technology staff members who assist our students and staff to use technology in a safe and productive manner. I would like to reference the 2017 breach of the ed-tech company, Edmodo. It is my professional opinion that this breach did not pose any significant threat to WCSD students. As stated in an article previously quoted to the board, published in motherboard.com, states, "The passwords have apparently been hashed with a robust B-crypt algorithm and a string of random characters known as assault, meaning hackers will have a much harder time obtaining users' actual login credentials. Not all of the records included a user email address." Another article, published in medium.com, an online journal, stated, "The company did a good job protecting using strong B-crypt hashing. This means that most attackers will not invest the time and effort required to decrypt the passwords, and will probably go on to target less protected accounts exposed in other breaches." WCSD uses the most widely-used industry-standard email system available and actively secures these accounts. Breaches like the Edmodo breach are highly unlikely to result in the compromise of sensitive student data. There's a difference between a student email address and a student account login. There's a distinct difference in the functionality within WCSD. Student account logins are used for students to access technology tools used within WCSD. All of these applications use the student account to correctly route information between staff and other students. All students are given an account login to ensure a fair and equitable education is provided to all students. These accounts do not have external email access, inbound or outbound. External email accounts are only used when authorized by parents. All external email is also carefully filtered for content. We are a 21st-century district preparing our students for 21st-century workplace. Giving them experience with the tools required to be successful within the 21st-century workplace is our duty as educators. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cunningham. JJ?
Jeff Carlton.
Mr. Carlton, welcome.
Thank you for hearing me. I'm here representing my place of worship, the Unitarian Universalist Fellowship of Northern Nevada, and also the TAG Group, the Transgender and Allies Group. You know, the board had sent the committee and had a chair committee come through that was revised in 2017, but because of a very vocal minority of people, the board did not approve that curriculum. So I'm here to advocate that you do. It is very conservative in that it is an opt-in for parents to have their kids do it. So if there is a vocal group of people who do not want to have it, they can just opt out. Not opt-in is what I would like to say. Curriculums like this save lives. I think it gives very accurate information on STDs, and we know that chlamydia, gonorrhea, and syphilis are increasing in our region. It also is aligned with the LGBT inclusion in sex ed board policy that was made in November 2014, and this can save lives, too. We know that the suicide rates among transgender are the highest of any other subgroup, and I think accurate knowledge and curriculum can help stop bullying and things like that that can help contribute to this. I also want to say that within that curriculum, it is age-appropriate, it's medically accurate, culturally sensitive, it provides strategies to support all students, and it, regardless of their gender, race, disability, sexual orientation, or their gender identity, it's consistent and compliant with state and federal laws, and it provides a foundation of knowledge and skills related to human development, relationships, decision-making, abstinence, contraceptives, and disease prevention. And, you know, it pushes abstinence. It coaches kids on how to say no. So I think that this is the kind of thing that we need to have in our curriculum. I spent my career working in a charter school underneath Washoe County, and things like this are catch-as-catch-can. You know, the schools are fighting to help kids, you know, pass proficiencies back when I was teaching, and things like that. One year, you might have it, depending on who's advocating, but other years, you don't have anything. Kids go through blind, and they're just stuck with whatever their peers tell them, and hopefully their parents will responsibly teach them, but you can't count on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carlton.
Hi, how are all of you? Good. I wasn't here the last time. I was on vacation. So I'm here again today. I'm listening to these people, they're talking about their kids and how they need to be protected, and I'm here to talk about teachers and how they need to be protected. I have a feeling that you guys, as board members, you probably can't do a whole lot. You can talk to Superintendent Davis, but she's the person who actually runs the whole thing. So I feel like I'm really at a loss, not knowing where to go to talk to for these issues. So one of the big issues is the morale of how many thousands of Washoe County School District teachers. I haven't talked to one teacher who feels good about it. You're going to be losing teachers. It's a 50% dropout rate on teachers after five years. As I was listening to, you know, protect our children with technology, if that happens, who's going to be following up on that? The teacher. Isn't the teacher supposed to be teaching the children? That's how the children learn. And the only way that's going to happen is if some of these programs that are shoved on the teachers, example, you have to teach the exact same thing at the exact same time every single day, and do it the exact same way. We went to college to be teachers, and we were trained, and every single one of us is an individual, as well as the students are. They all learn differently, we all teach differently. We should be able to teach the way we can do best, instead of, this is the time you do it, this is the way you do it, no matter what, as long as we teach the standards. Shouldn't that be the main thing? That's what's happening to the teachers. It's being taken away. They want us to be robots. Maybe we'll all turn into online teaching. I don't know. But I know, just from going into different classrooms and from my own 28 years of teaching, children need interaction with human beings. So I guess I'm just trying to say, what do I do? Do I keep coming and talking to you guys? I mean, I have tons of things to talk about, you know, interventions, all sorts of things. So I will probably just keep coming back. But what do I do to change it? What can I do to make teachers want to stay teachers? Because the ones who leave, the 50% that leave, most of them are excellent teachers. They're gone. See you next time.
Thank you, Ms. Marks, and we do care.
Donald Gallimore.
Mr. Gallimore, welcome.
Hello, welcome. Good afternoon, everybody. I'm Don Gallimore, Sr., and I'm here as a board member of Protect Nevada Children. That's Protect Nevada Children. That's all. Anyway, for the most part, I just wanted to address the board as supporter of John Appolito and the data processing we've been working on for years, to try to bring it to your attention that this is a little onerous, and it may be out of place. There's so much data that is being taken, used on the dark web. That is something the IT gentleman might have missed, but the regular web, okay, it may be okay. But the dark web, it has social security numbers, all the important information of the students, the parents, your layperson, doctors, your lawyer, whoever the kids and their families deal with. FERPA, HIPAA is being trounced on a daily, hourly basis, and all our laws are under attack or scrutiny. I just want to make sure that you guys understand that SEL, which is Social Emotional Learning, is the worst thing in the world for our kids, and that's kind of the format or framework that you guys are working on right now. Please, I implore you to rethink SEL. It's eugenics. It is the categorization and catalyzation of our students, our parents, our families, and that is just dead wrong. If you want to read Margaret Sanger and everything she did for Planned Parenthood, it's pretty much kind of death for our kids or death for a certain segment of society. And that's not what we want. I don't think. I'm trying to justify that in my own head. But I just implore you to just be cognizant of what we're teaching our kids, and it's not just that. It's a copyrighted program, as I've said before. This is something that we don't even have a chance, a choice of, or you don't have a choice of changing. So in terms of implementing what we've already got, I just implore you to be careful of what we're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gallimore.
Kami Craig Lyman.
Welcome, Kami.
Thank you. Just to get to the point, I'm here because of experience of allocation, two years in a row, and a letter that I have written that I hope I can get through. We, as a family, have experienced this twice in the two years with the same child, and it has affected him and still does now. In his prime of age of learning, and allocations are tampering with not only my kids, but everyone else's kids that have gone through this two years in a row. Their education, their excitement, their nerves, their brain, personality towards a school. This is a subject that is hurting our kids more than anything, and to lose the passionate teacher after the school year has begun is no longer okay. This is our second time that it has happened to us, and also along with other families. In 2017 school year, kindergarten, we had Grace, but this is now his first-grade year, and we now feel that this is hindering and hurting our child. I've been to trustee meetings, I've been to principal meetings, I've had a petition going. We're over 500 people plus have signed, and still feeling completely hopeless, as the teachers, kids, and families do as well. The more that I chat with families, the more that I talk with parents, and so, so, so sad, as the woman was saying before, is the teachers also feel hopeless. So I understand that the budget and the numbers have to be looked at, but we do have to do what is best when it comes to the reason why we're at school, which is our kids' education. As a business owner, I understand the sacrifices we must make sometimes as we work to balance a budget, but those sacrifices should be on the back of our first graders, or any student for that matter. I've been in communication with people at RoyGom, and they're saying that it's not just a clerical error, there was a little bit more to the story. That's something that none of us on the parent's side can have a receipt on, but you just hear through the grapevine, and that startles us as families as well, and parents, and understanding that the district does like to be transparent. There's many stories and talks, but yet, no solutions. And this is probably my fourth attempt in talking to someone in the higher arch in the community, and it just saddens my heart and weakens my heart, not only because I'm listening to my son every day after Ms. Oliphant has left, but I hear the other teachers, and I hear the other students, and I hear the other parents, and I said this again, and I want to say it again and again, that the understanding is hopeless. That's the word that I keep coming across. And that's very sad, knowing that I'm a parent, and I'm a business owner, and I'm a community goer, and I love, 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 but it's hard to know that you guys want us a part of it, but there's no solutions on the backside of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have at this time.
Thank you. And certainly, I know our staff is happy to talk with you. Is it Ms. Lyman, your last name, Lyman? Yeah, you don't need to get it. I just wanted to let you know I know our staff is happy to talk with you, and we have your information, so thank you. Okay, thank you, all of you, for making public comment. We do like to hear from folks, and we do like to solve problems, so appreciate that. Our next item is action to adopt the agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda? Thank you, Dr. Taylor. Second by Mr. Mayor. Any further discussion? Hearing that, all those in favor, please sign if I'm saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we will go on to the consent items, and I did want to note that in item 2.09, we have the approval of Nathan Noble as the student representative to the Safe and Healthy Schools Commission. Nathan, are you here? Did you want to say anything? Did you want to come up and say anything to the board?
(Inaudible)
You do look great, Nathan. It's a flashback for me.
I'm sorry, you'll have to pardon the attire. It's Spirit Week at Worcester, and slightly inappropriate for this situation, but I had no desire to remove the spirit gum.
No, no.
Put my wig in place. Yeah.
We want to thank you for joining the Safe and Healthy Schools Commission. Anything you'd like to say about that?
Well, I hope that if I'm approved, my service on the Safe and Healthy Schools Commission will provide some student perspective on the decisions made by the commission, since ultimately, we are the ones who are affected by the decisions you make, and we are the ones who bear the cross that you put. And I hope that if approved, I'm able to provide useful and unique insight. Thank you, guys, for all your time and everything you do.
All right, well, thank you, Nathan. Peace out, brother. That was great, and we very much appreciate you committing your time, Nathan. I know you're involved in a lot of things, and we do appreciate that. Do we have any public comment on any of our consent agenda items?
John Appolito.
Mr. Appolito.
My name is John Appolito, and I did have a comment on, I think it was 2.03, JJ, is that right? The IT. I guess the gentleman right behind me is the man I've been asking to meet with for a month. The school district told me I had needed to talk to three different people, and none of them would talk with me, but I'd very much like to talk with this gentleman here. So if any of you guys can help that, I'd appreciate it. Two years ago, the district said they, 441 families opted out of the district email addresses. That was two years ago. Evidently, all of those email addresses got recreated without our permission. Now, I cannot opt out of district email addresses. So I had some questions, especially for this gentleman. When were the email addresses recreated? What changed over the last year that prevents the district from deleting those email addresses? Were the other 440 families notified their email addresses on their kids were recreated? Via that data breach and the subsequent sale to the Chinese, the gentleman behind me forgot to mention that after Edmodo was breached and the data was for sale on the dark web, the Chinese just bought the company. They bought that company for the data. What was interesting in the snow job story that the district did on My News 4, they said they're still going to use Edmodo. They're not going to tell the parents Edmodo is owned by the Chinese now. To me, that's problematic. If this stuff is so great, and you're so confident with the gentleman, what he has to say, tell the parents. Let them decide. You're playing God. You should not be doing this. You have more facts than most school board members in the country, yet you still don't answer the questions. Been trying to meet with this gentleman for a month. Maybe he'll meet with me now, I don't know. Why do the district email addresses include the IDs? There's no reason to have a student ID for a district email. Here's the form from the inclined schools. There's no place to opt out. The form's already filled out that you're agreeing to use these emails for external emails. It's a little different than what the gentleman said. Same with Katie's story on My News 4. Does the district acknowledge that the Chinese entity that bought Edmodo now has our children Edmodo profile, student email addresses, usernames, and student IDs? And one more question? Yes, invitation. Mon Bertolucci Show, he emailed you an invite. We're going to have an hour, school board candidates, Protect Nevada Children, hopefully one or two of you. I forget the date, but, oh, I think it's October 10th. It's a Thursday at 10 o'clock. I'll email you the date. Thank you.
Thank you. And item 2.03 is a follow-up of an information technology audit, so just to clarify. And again, we do want to restate for the public record that no student personal information has at any time been compromised, and student personal information is not kept on Edmodo. So just want to reassure folks. Any other public comment on the consent agenda? Are there any questions on the consent agenda? Okay, all right. Well, and I did have a question for staff about the budget implications of implementing the... implications of implementing the IT audit, and it was quite, quite extensive, a pretty large budget item, but I did want to make sure that that gets included in the record for the, for the item. Any other discussion? And if there's none, we entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Vice President Raymond.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kelly. Any further discussion? Hearing that, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next, we will hear from Dr. Dana Ryan and Dr. Renee Cantu, Executive Director of JAG Nevada, and Dana, and do you have other guests with you? Okay. All right, this is a presentation regarding the job opportunities for America's graduates, the JAG program in eight district schools. Demontie Ranch High School, Galena High School, Robert McQueen High School, North Valleys High School, Edward C. Reed High School, Reno High School, Spanish Springs High School, and Earl Worcester High School. Welcome, and Dr. Ryan, you can introduce your fellow guests.
So I forgot to tell the president that I was kicking this off for them. So, welcome. We do have with us our own Dr. Dana Ryan, who's over at our Career Technical and Signature Academies, and then we have Dr. Renee Cantu, and of course Frank Woodbeck, and they are part of Jobs for American Graduates, JAG. I am a member of the Nevada JAG Board, and I love JAG because JAG is an opportunity to see promise in all kids. And we are starting to do some cutting-edge work around workforce development and career technical education as we partner with JAG. And what we've seen over the course, Renee, help me with this, at least in the past three, four years, the graduation rate for our students who've been a part of JAG has been phenomenal. And I know you'll share some of that with us today for Washoe.
I certainly will. Ninety-four percent, I believe.
But I think it's the opportunity to capture more kids that would not get to this finish line, and not just to get to the finish line of graduation, but put them on a pathway to work and be a part of a thriving community. So I will hand it over, and I am just happy and thrilled about being a member of the JAG Board and the amazing work that we are doing in Nevada for children.
Can I just introduce my good friend Frank Woodbeck, Nevada System of Higher Ed, and my other good friend Renee Cantu from JAG Nevada, and we are super excited in Washoe County School District to be able to include them in our CTE family, because they should have always been in our CTE family. But we are really fortunate to have such great partners around moving kids forward and getting them prepared for a successful career and a successful life. So with that, Frank, do you want to give a little bit of?
Okay, I'll kick it off, if you don't mind. For the record, Frank Woodbeck, I am Executive Director of Workforce Development for the System of Higher Education. My other job is Chairman of the Board for Jobs for Nevada's Graduates or JAG Nevada. We've, we launched JAG Nevada about six years ago, when at that time I was Director of Employment for the state, and the government and I reviewed the program and felt that it would be a good program to, to actually intervene in the lives of, of young folks who are having trouble getting through high school. We, we launched the program as a pilot, and we then hired Dr. Cantu to, to run and grow the program. Dr. Cantu has done, and his team have done amazing work. We were able to also engage my good friend, Dr. Ryan, in understanding, not only understanding JAG, but actually taking JAG to the next level when it comes to workforce development and involvement in career and technical education. I will say that this JAG program in Nevada, out of 35 states where JAG operates, to the best of my knowledge, is the first JAG program that has taken the program to the level of including JAG in career and technical education, and Dr. Ryan has taken the lead on, on suggesting and actually enacting that. I will now turn it over to Dr. Cantu.
Thank you so much, Renee Cantu, for the record. Let me begin by thanking Superintendent Davis, Dr. Ryan, and all of you for the opportunity to tell you a little bit more about JAG. I know we have an event coming up, October 25th, that I hope you will be able to attend, and so after today, you should know plenty more about what we've been doing here at JAG. So to begin with, JAG is Jobs for America's Graduates. And what is JAG? JAG is a multi-year program. We're embedded in, in eight high schools here. We have 11 programs in the high schools. We have double programs at McQueen, Reed, and Spanish Springs. And reason being, you know, the more, you know, staff we have, the more students that we can serve. Every specialist can serve 45 to 60 students, and the whole focus of JAG is to help young people graduate, you know, and my first language was Spanish, so in Spanish commencement, comenzar means to begin. And so to us, graduation is a beginning. The really important work takes place during 12 months of follow-up, which JAG conducts, which is a time when we help young people find a career pathway, you know, and for us, what we've worked very hard to do is to connect education and workforce and workforce development together, so that rather than young people graduating and kind of trying to find their path and their way, to actually help them find a career pathway in a key industry, in a high-demand occupation, and we look at the whole array of the types of jobs that are out there. So this could be, you know, via community college, it could be via apprenticeships or internships, it could be training at work. We have had a very successful partnership with Dr. Ryan and also with the Tesla Gigafactory, where over 30 of their 50 students in their manufacturing development programs were JAG kids, you know, from across Nevada. And these are young people, it's the ideal situation, you have young people working and going to school. And if you think back on your own education, how did you do it? You did it by working and by going to school. So we also connect, like I said, Tesla with hundreds of other businesses, so that we can help young people find internships, apprenticeships, jobs, part-time jobs during school, that kind of thing. So our role and impact, JAG is a connector, ooh, fancy. Hang on. Yes, thank you. My apologies, I'm being a lot eye today. So JAG is a connector. On the, on the one side, you have Isabel, she was a Las Vegas high school student who did not quite, did not get accepted to the university of her choice, and went and interviewed at the Gigafactory, got a job offer. So today, she's enrolled in the apprentice program, she's in TMCC, and she's been promoted at her job, so we're very part of her. And she represents what we do, which is try to connect K-12 to business, to post-secondary education. You know, in our philosophy and opinion, if a young person is not going to go, go to college or university, we encourage them and try to help them enroll in programs like Join, where they can get access to Workforce Investment Opportunity Act funding and resources to help them, you know, in our, you know, in my opinion, if you don't do a FAFSA, you should be doing some sort of WEO involvement after high school. So what JAG does, it's a multi-year program, we work in the high schools, we teach work readiness, there are 87 competencies, it's a national curriculum. So what JAG teaches is soft skills, and help young people have those high levels of trainability. And I recently came back from a national conference, and the whole focus of the conference, there were a number of corporations there, and what they talked about in terms of what they were looking for, and they were desperately looking for help, they were not talking about technical skills, they were talking about, can you get along with other people? Will you show up on time? Can you solve a problem? You know, and those are the kind of skills that JAG provides. So when you think about JAG and CTE, we have a partnership here in Washoe County, which has, you know, really gone far out the gate. So JAG teaches, teaches soft skills, and, and CTE, Career Technical Education, teaches technical skills. Together, soft and technical skills are an unbeatable combination to help young people prepare for the future, which is the whole point of what we do. So kind of the way we array the 12-month follow-up that we do is what we call our E2E or Education to Employment Program. And that focus, we focus on key industries like healthcare, construction, IT, manufacturing, logistics, so that rather than, you know, nothing wrong with working in fast food, I did it myself, you know, nothing wrong with it, you know, I tell young people, if you're in fast food, I want you to be on the management track. But if we can get you into a healthcare program, if we can get you into that first step on a career ladder, that's what we want to do. So, next slide, please. So when you look at, JAG National recently did a study, and in terms of the employment of JAG kids compared to other kids in the same age group, the actual employment rate of 66.7% for JAG was 17 percentage points higher than the comparison group. So males had about a 16.3 advantage, and the JAG class of 17 had a post-graduation full-time employment rate of 47.2. The employment rate for our program is in the 80% range of those who find employment. So, you know, this is a national study conducted by Drexel University, showing that JAG not only helps young people graduate with that 94% graduation rate, but also helps them to find employment. So when we started working with schools here in Washoe County in 2013, I started in 2014, actually, I wanted us, as we embedded in the schools, because we're, we're, we're a nonprofit organization, we're embedded in the schools, I wanted to be an asset in every principal's toolbox, this program. And so the way the tool works is we can help principals and administration raise graduation rates, we can help them close the achievement gap. As I go on to talk a little bit about where our students come from, you'll see that our students are, we're not creaming by any way, shape, or form, but working with students who have multiple barriers to success. And what we have found is they are so talented and able that with a little bit of extra structure and love, as I call it, you know, they're able to really blossom and really become what they're supposed to be. And then we also try to, you know, the focus of JAG is to try, and I tell this to everybody we work with, is like, we want to take them to their highest outcome. We don't just want to graduate a kid and get them a job, because it's Jobs for America's Graduates. We'd like for them to find a pathway to their highest outcome. So JAG and CTE, like I said, you know, we teach soft skills, CTE provides technical skills. I've also said that JAG is the career part of career technical education, which makes a lot of sense. And the partnership with Dr. Ryan, you know, has been terrific. So when we got together about a year, year and a half ago, we began talking about how we can work together. So there are young people in career tech education programs who may be struggling, who would benefit from a dual enrollment with JAG. So when you look at a JAG program, it does teach, you know, the career readiness work, but we also provide tutoring for young people. So we have provided arrangements where young people can actually take JAG, you know, we provide the tutoring, and we can also pay for, you know, things like an extra class during the summer, or whenever they need to take, maybe an online class, take an online class, so that they can make up credit, so they need not choose CTE or JAG, but can do both. And then our thought was, JAG students come from, you know, very diverse backgrounds, lots of young people from the bottom quartile, bottom half, also a lot of young people who are free and reduced lunch youth. So this is a good pathway to diversify CTE as well, to get young people into CTE programs who might not otherwise have that opportunity to do so. And so last year, we had our JAG students take the career readiness exam, and so they'll be getting a certificate for that. So quickly, Sophia Story, young lady from Spanish Springs High School, and I'll go quick. Credit deficient, had a very tough background, I'd be glad to provide you more information. She recovered her credits, she graduated with a 3.25 GPA, enrolled in Truckee Meadows Community College, a promised scholar, and also working at Reno Diagnostic Center. So that is kind of the ideal situation that we've worked for, and we're so proud of young people like her. So Washoe County demographics, we currently are serving 634 students in Washoe County. 463 are enrolled in the multi-year 9th through 12th grade, and the other 171, if you recall, that 12-month follow-up is essential. So we don't leave when they leave school, we continue with them moving forward. Roughly half male and female, 77% intended to complete high school, about a third, you know, their parents did not have, both parents at the home, so these are some of the demographics. 49% are free and reduced lunch, average 2.18 GPA, so these are not, upon entry, they're not super high GPAs. Excessive absenteeism. In terms of average number of barriers, these are academic, familial, economic, 7.22 barriers per student. So, and then what the JAG program does is we provide them with 100, over 120 hours, at the very least, of contact throughout the year to help them get back on track. So the outcomes of that yields, one, two, lovely kids, we have beautiful kids. Next one. So here are the graduation rates by school, so you can see on down the line, every, all two of the programs are over 90%, and the other two have extenuating circumstances where they may have a larger proportion of kids who are, you know, facing more challenges and that kind of thing. But we continue to work with them to get those above 90%. Onto the next. And so 2017 graduate, wait, I did hit that one. I did that one, I apologize. The one before, one before, one, two before. Oh, ooh, this page.
You're going to have to talk it.
Okay, I'm going to talk. The overall Washoe County School District outcomes, it is not up there on the slide. The graduation rate for JAG for, for 2017, after 12 months of follow-up, was 94%. Our civilian job placement, so this is employment and military enlistment, 78%. The goal was 60, it was 78%. Positive outcomes, which is employment or post-secondary enrollment, was 85%. Target was 80, so we exceeded that. Full-time jobs, 84%, a full 24 points above the target of 60. And full-time placement, so this is, full-time placement refers to, it's 94%, and it refers to they are working full-time, going to school full-time, or combining work and school for a full-time endeavor. So that's what that represents. So, and I apologize that that slide was missing. When we look at the Washoe outcomes by ethnicity and race, you can see that, that many of the populations have 100%, over 90%, some work to do with students from two or more races, 84%, still good, but, you know, our goal is to get to 90% and above. Not sure why that is, but that's the kind of thing that we look at. With regard to job placement, again, a little bit of work to do with the American Indian population with a 50% job placement rate. You're looking at positive outcomes, some work to do with African-American students to get up to 80%, it's at 78. For full-time jobs, again, African-American youth lag behind, the target being 80, it's at 57. We have some significant work to do there as well. And full-time placement, pretty much across the board, meeting and exceeding standards. So, this one is good. So with regard to JAG's return on investment, you know, we work with, let's move on to the next slide, that'll be good. The return on investment, this slide is kind of small, but in terms of, you know, an annual increase of $744,000 in state tax revenue, we have $24 million in annual gross state product, 108 new jobs, 2.85 million in auto sales, and this is looking at graduating JAG kids alone, that this is the kind of economic impact that the JAG program has here in the state of Nevada. So, and we included this, we thought this was an important consideration. Corrections gets a lot of funding. On average, it costs $21,283 to incarcerate versus roughly $1,430, a fraction of the cost to educate a young person in the JAG program, the difference in cost being over So kind of in closing, you know, JAG is graduating more students, closing the achievement gap, and connecting more students in collaboration with all of you. So we want to thank you, your administration, your teachers, your principals, and, and all the folks, you know, down at the school level are absolutely essential to those good numbers. Those good numbers could not be achievable without the partnership of JAG and, and people in this, you know, very fine school district in CTE to do so. So we look forward in the future to doing more work and really finding more ways to bring CTE and JAG more closely aligned together. If there are any questions, we would be glad to entertain them. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Cantu, and thank you so much for the great work. It's really impressive, the outcomes, the results are very impressive. Mr. Woodbeck and Dr. Ryan, great, great work. Questions? Yes, Trustee Frankel.
Thank you so much for the presentation. It's really moving and motivating, and just makes me excited about the future, and that's great work. One of the questions I had, and for me as well as for parents or others who are listening, is how can students who are interested in participating find out more and get involved and get enrolled in this program?
Thank you so much. To inquire with their high school guidance counselor, or if they know of a JAG specialist on campus. Our three criteria for entry into the program are, students need it, they can benefit from it, from JAG, and most importantly, that they want it. So if, if students or parents are interested, we would be So if, if students or parents are interested, we would be more than happy to talk to them. Thank you.
And a related question, so is there capacity for taking more students?
So currently, there is, we, the capacity is about forty-five to sixty students per, so as we look at, you know, across the state. There is, some, some programs are overfilled, some are a little bit under capacity, so we can always try to find some. And the other thing that we do is that we, you know, are working to try to expand JAG to serve, you know, more students in more schools. So currently, we're at eight, eight high schools, and, you know, we would love the opportunity to serve more students here as well.
Great, thank you. Dr. Taylor.
Thank you, Madam President. This is a related question. So if there are other high schools that, that want to be involved, what do they do? Is there, I know there is, obviously, there's, there has to be limitations, funding and personnel and so on, what, what, how do you expand? What's, what's your plan?
Okay, thank you, Dr. Taylor. The, the program is about eighty-five percent funded by general fund appropriations from legislature. We were purposely, we purposely set it up as a 501(c)(3), so that we could accept funding from the state legislature, but also private sector funding that we are also seeking. So the, really, the, the growth will come from actually requesting more funding from the legislature, and also, funding that we are getting from the private sector, like, for example, Tesla, Strat Education, AT&amp;T, and others who have invested in the program. So, the, to add schools, we, we will have to look for ways in which we can fund that particular program, or the expansion thereof. We've also embarked, four years ago, on a demonstration project in Clark County, where the national office asked if there were, if we went deeper in schools, what would the effect be? We are trying, we are now beginning to see the outcome of that. We did a project, which is called Go Deep, in North Las Vegas, targeting four high schools, in which we have at least two programs and some three in those schools. And we're seeing the very, very positive effects now, and so we'll, we'll use that as evidence of, for greater investment by the, by the legislature, but we will also seek private sector investment.
Excellent. If I may, you know, just add to that, if a school is interested, if they would let us know, we can, we have a list of schools that are interested in JAG, and as we seek out funding, we can use that as information to help find ways to fund them.
Thank you, Dr. Cantu, Mr. Woodbeck, and of course, Dr. Dana.
Great, thank you. Any other questions from the board? Well, again, thank you so much for the great work, and thanks for supporting our, our students here in Washoe County.
Can we let the We the People students go next?
They are next. Yep, yep. Okay, we are on to our next item, which is a presentation on We the People. Ms. McNeil, or Dr. McNeil, is you?
Oh, they're not here.
They are here, I see Mr. Clark, it's right there.
We have a few more students that are en route, so if it's the pleasure of the board, could we move three point oh three?
Okay, all right, we will do that then. Okay, because we do want to hear from those students, so thank you. All right, we'll come back to three point oh two, and we'll go to three point zero three. Mr. Doyle, presentation discussion on the activities of the audit committee from the 2017-18 school year. And Mr. Tom Doyle is our audit committee chair, who is a volunteer, and we very much appreciate your service, Mr. Doyle, thank you.
Thank you. And for the record, my name is Tom Doyle. I was once again elected chairman.
Congratulations.
Exactly the same way I was elected the first time. I said, sure, I'll, I'll be willing to volunteer, and then everybody else stayed dead silent.
They pushed their chairs back to the table.
Anyway, so that, I guess that's how you end up in these positions.
We appreciate it very much, sir.
We do want to get back on track, they're starting to do reports again, the last report was in 2014, so now we'll start to do one every single year, to recap the previous year for the board. Couple of just footnotes real quick. We did add two new board members, Jay Goldberg and Todd Shipley, and they replaced Elizabeth Wicks and Catherine Thompson, who served for a number of years. So, welcome the two new members on board, and Jay is actually the new vice chairman of the board, excuse me, of the committee. In addition, we'd like to thank Paula Ward, who is the chief auditor. We're in the search mode now for a new chief auditor, as Paula has decided to retire. So, anyway, that kind of gives you an idea. I'm taking you through, basically, we had four meetings that this covers, and then, of course, we had the recent one we just did last month. So I'm just gonna kind of recap very generally, I'm not gonna go into excruciating detail, I don't have a PowerPoint, which I'm sure you're relieved about that. And, my daughter just got married a month ago, and of course, I threatened to have a forty-five-page speech, and I actually brought a big stack of paper up, and then threw it aside. Everybody was well relieved, so. I'll go through this fairly quickly for you.
Thank you.
And then, of course, entertain any questions. We did go through the audit for Aid Bailey, which is in process again. Aid Bailey's audit, very good job, very complimentary of the finance department. The one thing that we did note was a question mark, was the fact that they indicated the current PERS liability, basically unfunded PERS for the school district's portion is seven hundred and forty million dollars. That caught my attention to some degree. And also, they have now had a new reporting requirement where the unfunded benefits, so healthcare and all that, is about a hundred million. That doesn't include, you know, people paying in, just like social security pays for current, social security recipients, but it is kind of a, something you always have to worry about for the far future. The other thing that concerned us a little bit, is that the retirement system bases their estimates on the fact they expect to have an annual return on investment of eight percent, which I'm sure many of us would like to get in our benefits. But anyway, so, so there is an outstanding deal, there's not much they can do about it, but they're just reporting on it. Other than that, the audit went very well.
Just, just to clarify for members of the public who aren't familiar, PERS is, is the Nevada, it's the state public employee retirement system, so it's not governed by the school district or the school board, it is a state.
That is correct. The school board has no ability to really change anything. All the employees in the district are just part of PERS, the public employee retirement system, same as all other county and state employees for the most part.
Thank you.
The next topic is, we did do the follow-up on the IT audit, obviously, that has some discussion here. Regarding ed tech, just to be clear, this audit was performed a while back, when this was not a topic, so this, that audit had nothing to do with that particular subject. The basic, we still have about seven or eight of the items pointed out over a year ago that have still not been addressed. The reasons, and there's long explanations from the IT department, is that they just flat-out say they're understaffed and they can't get enough budget approved to be able to do things. There's probably five or six different plans that they were supposed to put together, a contingency plan, a plan for managing profiles, a risk security plans, all these types of plans that usually are documented policies that say, here's how we're gonna, here's how we're gonna do, or if the building burns down, here's our backup plan. None of those plans, almost none, got done. There's still outstanding issues with the IT department, and once again, their explanation is very detailed about the fact that they don't have the funding to be able to get some of this stuff done, or to do some of the security mitigation items that have been recommended by the audit department. And I, you know, obviously, I have no issue with the IT people saying that, look, we want to do these things too, we just can't get enough. So, obviously, as things work in life, if something really bad happens one of these days, and I assume that that'll, you know, be fixed, but until then, the department is saying, yeah, we're somewhat at risk right now, at a high risk, because we don't have the staffing to get everything done. On the good side, they accomplished a lot in getting thousands and thousands of rogue devices off of the system, getting more passwords changed, so people couldn't just simply access it. They used to, you go to the library and ask a student what the ID is, and next thing you know, you can get into the system, which is not the Business Plus system, which has all your payroll and crucial data. That system is fairly well tied down, and is not widely accessible, so, so there's, that mitigates a little bit. Anyway, it's an ongoing follow-up audit, but the key here is that there's risk out there for the IT department, and they just don't feel like they can keep up with it. Obviously, we heard talk today that maybe they're trying to get caught up, but these items are still outstanding.
I, I did want to add, just again, for folks who might be viewing this or are hearing it, the IT department is in progress on the security plan that was called for in the audit. And the price tag on the implementation of the audit recommendations, and, and we even talked about it this morning in the, in the budget workshop session, that we, at least I would certainly like to increase our investment in IT. The price tag was about seven point eight million dollars, which was more than the entire amount of the deficit we had last year to, to cure at the end of it. So, it's a big number for the district, but I, I hope that we will be able to prioritize some of those, some of those audit recommendations, and, and be able to take action on some of them. So we appreciate the audit, and we appreciate the follow-up.
Certainly, and I think probably the, the greatest progress that can be made, at least from my perspective, is that even though you can't effectuate a plan because you don't have the funding to do it, I don't find any reason that, you know, we can't scrape together the resources to write the plans of what you want to do once you have the money available. So, and if anybody needs my help in those areas, that, I'm more than happy to assist.
Thank you.
Next item is the nutrition services audit, that obviously resulted in a couple of changes in policy. The audit disclosed that you could have unpaid liability at the end of the year of up to about eighty grand or more, on uncollected balances from the lun, lunches. So basically, if a student is not in the lunch program, free lunch program, and they can't pay for the lunch, they are given a lunch anyway, and then, of course, notices go out to parents. That situation now, I think, has been somewhat rectified, and what happens is that essentially, a collection policy has been put into place by the board. And so, that collection policy now will basically make the parents aware that they are obligated to pay this money, it's not just gonna be overlooked, it could potentially go to a collection agency, which I don't think it will, but essentially, to encourage the parents, you gotta pay for the lunch if you're not in the free lunch program. So, hopefully, that will start to, start to resolve itself. Now, the other one is, we have a, it's called a community eligibility program. It's a specialty program in which you can take a school that actually has a full, a very high percentage of students that are on the free lunch program. By filling out this Department of Agricultural forms, you can actually get permission to make that school entirely on the free lunch program, which reduces the burden on the school district for tracking things, billings, and all that other stuff, and basically allows all the students now to be on the free lunch program, so you no longer have any issue with that. Previously, that was not a program, the school district took advantage of, analytics went back and forth. In the end, two schools have already been put onto that program, it's successful, they'll roll more schools into it, which should also save the districts some money. The other audit, there were twenty-seven recommendations for the transportation audit. And of those, there's still about six or seven left to be completed. A couple of them are controversial items in that audit, as you're well aware, were the take-home vehicle policy, comparing the number of miles driven to what's expected, and just, you know, really not being totally justified. I believe the, last I heard, that that was still being reviewed for a decision as to whether or not to change it. There's just over twenty vehicles on that take-home-the-vehicle policy right now. The, but we're leaving that up, obviously, that's in the board's hands, and, and we're pretty much done from the audit committee's perspective, and, you know, obviously, you'll take that up. A couple of things, we, there's some deficits in the athletic transportation, we made a number of recommendations to how to cover those deficits, whether to charge more or what, but otherwise, it's another financial burden, where, you know, the athletic transportation to get all the student, excuse me, all the athletes to the games, is just not covering it, and so something has to be done, otherwise, once again, you're pulling more money out of your other budgets. And then, just other minor recommendations, such as, sometimes employees were going out and getting refueling at non-governmental gas stations, which obviously, if, you know, they get a better, you get a better deal, and so money's wasted there, and that's also being tightened up. So that kind of covers the transportation audit. A lot of these audits were done several years ago, and a lot of this is follow-up work to see if we can close out all the recommendations to finish them up. The athletic gate, athletic gate audit was done, I think there's like four or five hundred grand in revenue coming in on that, and basically tightened up controls, added some more policies, made sure the cash handling was a little bit more secure, those types of items. Very cooperative audit, and basically, all the recommendations were handled. We had an HR wages audit, in which we had over, over a hundred employees had wage inaccuracies, and, and so, they've retrained the staff to take care of those, and most, a lot of it was posting the wrong salaries in, when somebody got upgraded with a grade, they didn't read the charts right. A lot of that's been fixed, and then they added a secondary review. Secondary review will catch anything that's missed. So hopefully, that is now pretty much taken care of. There was an overpayment audit, in which about two hundred fifty-six employees are overpaid by an excess of a hundred thousand dollars. And so, that one is still in process of, it's been over a year, but they're still trying to collect from the employees. Now, of course, your attorney, Neil, or any HR expert will tell you, you can't just take it out of their paychecks, that's not legal. So you have to, even though they're still working for the school district, some things are never logical, they, they still have to collect from those employees, and they're still trying to do that. Some employees, of course, are gone, which makes it more difficult, but that is still in process. But the initial issues that caused it, those have been taken care of by the HR and the payroll departments. Property control audit, probably the only big issue there is that we don't do automated tracking. You know, that might mean something like, you know, when you go do your inventories, you got scan codes on all the devices and all that. If you're gonna do it, the best way to do it would be to use your accounting software for it, which is Business Plus. Business Plus does not do tracking in the way the school district needs to do the tracking, so therefore, we have, there is no automated solution.
Oh, wow.
And, back to budgets, spending a lot of money on an automated solution is definitely not gonna be something in the works. So they still have to struggle through what is much more of a manual tracking process for all the assets, vehicles, and all those types of things that are out there. And they do a property control audit themselves about once every two years to make sure all the assets are still there. Just some more controls have been put in for the purchasing cards to improve that. The, the only other area to, or two other areas to cover, one is kind of what's coming up, and then the other is the capital budgets. Obviously, with the WC1 monies, there was consideration for hiring construction auditor. I've done a lot of construction projects in my life, and I gotta tell you, if you don't tie down vendors, and you don't take care of change orders, which you always get a good deal, and then all of a sudden, the change orders come flying through on an emergency basis, if you don't tie all these things down and make vendors go according to the contracts, you'll, you'll end up losing a lot of money, and with this type of project that you're embarking on, you'll, you'll lose millions probably. The bottom line is that, number one, the school district definitely needs to have a dedicated person to do the construction auditing. If they're decent at their job, they'll easily pay for this, pay for it. And while we're lacking a chief auditor now, I would always recommend that eventually, you put that under an internal audit department, that creates the independence that person needs, so that, you know, nobody, regardless of who it is, whether it's Mark, your CFO, or anybody else, can't just say, no, no, you know, forget about that, ignore that one, don't worry about that, that vendor, they're related to so-and-so. So what you want to do is you want to make sure that everything is fully disclosed, and that you're constantly auditing it, because there's a lot of money going out, and I've been around long enough to know that it's just not safe out there to, to trust all your contractors, even though you'd like to, so.
And we did, the board did act to approve that position last year, and for this year's budget, so I know that's in the works. I know there has been some disagreement about where that position should report, and, and how much time should be dedicated, so we're still working on that. But, yeah, I, I think this board unanimously supported having that construction audit. And I will add, in my conversation with Aid Bailey today, they did include and did give particular emphasis to looking at our capital projects, expenditures, and accounting, and they said everything was absolutely by the book, so they were very pleased to see that. But of course, it wasn't a full audit of just capital projects, it was their normal audit, so they were sampling, but they, they felt very confident so far that things are being done very, very appropriately, so, but we're, we're anxious to support that as well.
Good, and we're, we're happy to hear that. It's gonna be a dedicated person, as opposed to contracting it out, which contracting out the auditing processes three times, the rates at a minimum. This way, you'll, you can at least have somebody in-house that is dedicated to going through it every single day.
Well, and I, I don't want to, I don't want to say that's resolved yet either, because the, you know, the Capital Funding Protection Committee wanted it to be contract, so it was completely independent, so that's still being resolved. But we do support that function being, being provided for the district on a dedicated basis.
Yeah, like I said, I, I Yeah, like I said, I would encourage, and Jay Goldberg couldn't be here today, but he also would encourage that getting an in-house person at whatever you're going to be paying them, $40, $50 an hour, is far better than going outside and paying $125 to $200 an hour, and anyway, you understand the situation, and I'm sure it's a debate.
Absolutely, and we appreciate your support for it as well.
Just upon closing, a few things coming up. Most of it, a lot of this year's work will be done on continuing to follow up on audits that are outstanding. They're going through the financial part of the nutrition services, and obviously, the contracts there mark a little on the tricky side to figure out exactly what they're doing, so that's going to be a key issue. So looking at healthcare from a risk management perspective, that's audit coming up. Taking a look, they've got other obligations for the Education Alliance, transportation as far as their drug testing program, and the normal run-of-the-mill student activity fund audits, that they always do a sampling of about six, seven schools every year to just try to get those policies in place. So, anyway, that wraps up my presentation, and I can entertain any questions if you have any.
Thank you. Very informative. Thank you so much for all the work that you do, and we do appreciate those audits, because it helps all of us to continuously improve, and if there's a better way to do things, we certainly want to know about it. Do we have questions from board members? Any trustees have questions or comments? Yes, Dr. Taylor, and then Dr. Faumster.
Thank you, Madam President. Not a question, just want to just thank you, Mr. Doyle, as Chair of the Committee, for taking the time to come in, because, you know, as you know, internal audit reports to the board, but this is, we haven't in the past had a regular opportunity to come in and hear a report, which I think, one, keeps us abreast and aware of what it is that's going on and the status as you follow up and those things that are outstanding, and then, secondly, I think it really, I hope it sends a better message even to the Committee that we really value and need what you do, you know, so much so that we want you to come in and talk to us about it. So I just really just appreciate that shift that's happened, and I think it's for the betterment of the district. So thank you so much, you and your colleagues on the Committee.
I will let the Committee know, and I think they do very much appreciate being able to have things delivered in this manner, because otherwise, you know, they're wondering if anybody's just saying, "Oh, okay, we got the report," but now this makes it really more of a perception that you're really listening and looking at things and trying to act on them. So appreciate the comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Faumster?
Yeah, I'd just like to echo what Dr. Taylor said. Thank you so much for your time and for stepping up and doing this, because it's something that's really needed. I particularly am enthusiastic about the athletic gates. It's always been like a crisis situation at some schools, and the property control piece is also huge. So I, you know, even if it just, you know, have, raises the consciousness of people who are involved, I think that's a big part. So I really appreciate this. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, and congratulations on being elected chair again, Mr. Doyle.
That'll teach me.
Oh, no, we absolutely appreciate your effort. It's volunteers like you that make us all better, so thank you. Thank you so much. Okay, thank you so much. Are we ready for We the People? Mr. Clark, are you ready? Okay, he's giving me a thumbs up. So we, I have to say, I asked that we have a presentation about We the People after serving as a judge for Mr. Clark's great team at Reno High School for a couple of years, and am so impressed with these young people and so impressed with the program, and just wanted to share that enthusiasm with everybody. So Dr. Fox is here, Angela Orr, our Social Studies Program facilitator, and Mr. Richard Clark, and I see Mr. Denny Martindale also in the audience. Thank you, welcome for being here, and Ms. Byersdorf.
You don't need me up here to introduce these folks to you, but thank you very much for giving us a little flexibility. We had some students coming out of the university, I think, that we were waiting for them to finish class. So Deborah Byersdorf, Chief Academic Officer, and I have the pleasure of working with, well, two members of this team, but I've known Mr. Clark for a number of years as well, and I had the opportunity, along with Chief Legal Counsel, I think it was your first time as well, Neil, to judge these guys just this last year, and they did amazing, as you know. So I'm going to turn over to the team to talk to you about what is We the People, and maybe, Mr. Clark, some predictions, maybe for, oh, I don't know, put him on the spot. Thanks so much.
I got the easy job today. Kider Fox for the record. I just am here to introduce, to turn it over to Angela Orr, the Social Studies Program facilitator.
All right, well, welcome all of you.
Thank you. I am Angela Orr, the Social Studies Program facilitator for grades K-12 with the Department of Curriculum and Instruction, and I'm honored to have that role and be able to support important programming in social studies across our district. One of the most important programs is our civic education program, We the People. So we're here today to give you a little bit of background on that program. But to start, I think in understanding this great program, we need to look at this quote from Supreme Court Justice Learn at Hand.
It wasn't a Supreme Court justice. He never made it.
From Justice Learn at Hand, about the, so this quote comes right after the end of World War II, and he notes that it is very, very important that even when you live in a republic, that you maintain the heart of the Constitution, that you understand it so deeply that the citizens themselves must be in control of their own government. And so I think that that is the type of education that we're hoping for when we're looking at the We the People program and why it's different than other civic education programs. So the big question before us is, how can we best prepare our young people with knowledge, skills, and dispositions to be informed and effective citizens? Many programs and many textbooks offer us the knowledge piece. They allow students to understand that there are three branches of government and how those branches work. They talk about federalism, local governments, and state governments. But very few programs that go before teachers also focus in on building the skills of a citizen, the ability to speak clearly and well in front of others, to debate logically, to be media literate and care about the sources of information, and even fewer provide some fostering of the important civic dispositions that kids must have in order to deeply care about our democracy and want to engage in that democracy. So we have chosen, as have many states throughout the nation, to really focus in on We the People, because it delivers not just knowledge, but also skills and dispositions for our kids. So the We the People program is a textbook that, and curriculum series, that came out in 1987 originally, during the bicentennial of our Constitution, and Warren Burger, who left the Supreme Court, chaired a commission because he was quite frankly angry at the state of American knowledge about the Constitution and our founding and how citizens could be involved in their government. And so he and the bicentennial commission found a program that came out of California called We the People. It was first introduced to them in 1986, and in 1987, it was adopted. This program was actually, one of the writers is from our own community, Margaret Branson, lived here in Reno for years and was one of the founding members of the Center for Civic Education and writers of this program. So just as a little bit of background, in fifth, seventh, and twelfth grade, the curriculum looks very, very similar, but in twelfth grade, there is a competitive aspect to the program, which Mr. Clark will talk more about later. I started teaching seventh grade We the People in 2002 at Dilworth Middle School, and it was an amazing experience. We had a very highly impacted group of kids. For instance, my advisory or homeroom kids, 11 of the 20 of them that year that I started teaching this had one or both parents in prison, and we were on the special education team, so we had the privilege of working with all of the students on IEPs on our team. And we decided that we wanted to empower students to know about their rights and responsibilities and engage them in the conversation. That May, when we held our congressional hearings, which I'll talk more about, we had more parents show up for that event than for any sport, athletics, art event of the year. My principal at the time, Councilor Vontas, said, "How did you get them all here?" And I said, "Well, I told students that if they were proud of their growth and their knowledge, that they needed to invite their parents." And so I think that that's a really powerful statement. I then went on to become a mentor teacher to other teachers across the nation in We the People, and then when I moved to Demone Ranch High School in 2003, taught there for seventh and twelfth grade in just regular classes. So I have a pretty deep understanding of the curriculum and can't speak highly enough about it. So across the years of study, the curriculum is based around questions. So the units are based around these big questions, like, what is the philosophical and historical foundation of our system? Where did we come from, and why do we believe what we believe? Then, how did the framers create the Constitution? So why did they make the decisions they made about how our government should be run? And then, what are the impacts of those decisions? So then, we get into kind of the nuanced and murkier waters, which is, have we lived up to our ideals? The ideals in the Declaration of Independence and the Bill of Rights later, how have those changed over time, and are we really living up to what we say we stand for? And then, the book kind of finalizes with the challenges that face us today and how young people can be involved in making positive change. So what makes the We the People program different than other programs is not just that it's quality information for students that is nonpartisan, but it's also that at the very end, all students, every single one of them, is required to participate in a culminating congressional hearing. This is a performance-based assessment of student knowledge and of their skills. So in small groups, they are assigned a unit of study, and they dig deep, they do research, they write a testimony, and then members of the community come into their classroom and listen to them, and then ask questions that they are not sure what's coming, and they are able to take that deep knowledge that they have and their skills in public speaking to explain an answer to the question. And then they receive feedback on their performance. That's what really sets this program apart. What we know is, even in our AP classes that have We the People, the students in AP, We the People classes, score higher on the AP exam than those in traditional AP government classes, and it's because of the internalization, that deep internalization of the knowledge and the application that they have. So then, in the congressional hearing, the kids have their four minutes of testimony, takes six minutes of questions that they're unsure of what's going to happen, and they're asked to justify their responses to questions like this, which is about the First Amendment and the importance of rights in the First Amendment, especially to women and minorities, and then doing their own thinking on when those rights might be limited. So importantly, the assessment of all of this and the performance assessment is built on things that we can say are really important to our NVACs for social studies and our NVACs for literacy. You have to demonstrate deep understanding of the issues. You have to be able to apply your thinking, reason appropriately, and use evidence to support your point of view. So the We the People program is not about debate, it is about civil discourse and building that every day amongst our young people, so that they understand the best way to engage with others with whom they disagree and with whom they agree in order to make change. We ask that every student be a part of this. This isn't a special club for interested students, it's for the entire class, and the entire class acts as a team. So in our district, over the last five years, we've trained 255 fifth-grade teachers in the program and then provided them with a class set of books for coming to the training. And for years, for over 10 years, Spanish Springs, Matthews, Alice Taylor, and Colin Ranch have been participating with their fifth-grade classes. If you've ever been to one of those competitions, I'm sure you've enjoyed it immensely. Cold Springs Middle School and Shaw Middle School participate annually, and then we have many high schools that participate in the competitive district competition in December, and then the winning schools go on to our state competition, and then the winning school from that goes on to the national competition. And so you're probably much more interested in hearing from Mr. Clark and his students about this program, so we'll get to them soon. But just an invite, we hope that as many of you as possible will participate in the high school competition, which occurs in December, and you can come and you can be a fly on the wall and just watch what's going on, or you can be a judge. We have people in this room who have done that, including Deputy Superintendent Kristen McNeil, who gets to judge with me every year. And we have a great time, and I think it's uplifting, and it just gives you such hope for our future, so we invite you to be a part of that. We are, across the nation, we have had the biggest increase in high school participation in Washoe County School District, and Reno High School, Reed High School, and Incline High Schools have placed in the top 20 at the national competition for over a decade. So, yeah, we do, I hate to say it, because I don't want to be competitive, but we do dominate the state here. That's not what it's about. I know that's not what it's about. I know. But, you know, yay. So then, I just, I hope that you'll ask the students or that they'll be able to explain that because of the high stakes of the competition, but also just because of the performance assessment at the end and the level to which students have to work together and collaborate over the course of a semester, the social emotional learning that is inherent in that is really deep. So students have to learn to work across conflict, they have to learn to regulate themselves. Sometimes the students who join this program are eager to speak at all moments, and so they have to learn to listen, they have to learn when to mediate their own point of view for the group, and they have to really be self-aware and make good relationships with their peers. And this is not always easy, so it is through conflict that they learn some of these things, which I think is great. It's a real-life skill. And then, We the People also really does a great job of representing our 21st century skills that we are hoping to foster in all of our curriculum and instruction throughout the district, because students are building their own knowledge, they're constructing their own knowledge through deep research opportunities, they're solving problems, they are using technology for their learning and not just to demonstrate their learning, they become skilled communicators, and they're collaborating all the time. So we do do a lot of professional learning for teachers, and this is done in collaboration with the Nevada Center for Civic Engagement, the State Bar of Nevada, and the Nevada Humanities. So the Department of Curriculum and Instruction does some funding for this, but there are many partnerships across the community to make this possible, and we normally train teachers in two-to-seven-day seminars. This past weekend, we also had a half-day where we invited members of community organizations and community government to talk with our teachers. So finally, we have lots of people in the community that help out. So we have 140 volunteers currently that help assist at the elementary, middle, and high schools, so these are people that take time out of their own day to come into classrooms, and I don't think there's anything better for them to see than students involved in civic discourse and talking about important issues. And then, we have 36 judges for our December competition, and those people give up an entire day to come and be with our students. And then I just have to say thank you to Nevada Humanities for continuously saying yes to our grants to help pay for professional learning and books for our teachers. So without further ado, the main attraction from Reno High School, my dear friend and colleague, Mr. Richard Clark, and his students from the We the People team.
Good afternoon. First, I have to apologize to Angela, because I'm always in teacher mode, so I'm sorry. I want to introduce who I have sitting behind me. I have a number of people who have come. First, I have my coaches, I have three of them. One is, two of them are teachers at Reno High School with me, Matt Oaks, who's also the basketball coach at Reno High School, and Brian Carlin, who's been my best friend since we've been in college. And then my third coach is also my father-in-law, and Mr. Oaks' father-in-law, and that's Denny Martindale. I have, not all the students are listed, because, you know, there's college kids and, oh, I have this tonight, so. I have, I have three students who have participated in the program. I have, first, the ASUN president of the University of Nevada. I have first, the ASUN President of the University of Nevada, Hannah Jackson.
Yay!
She's a, she's a 2015 grad. I have a 2016 grad, McKenna Levitt. And then I also have a 2017 grad in Ben Neveski. And then additionally, I have three students in the back who are getting their open public meeting hours for my government class, who are also in We the People. And that is McKenna's brother, Jake Levitt, Haley Rowe, and Charlotte Mason. And finally, I have, I have one of my parents, and that is, um, Ms. Tammy Jackson, who is Hannah's mom to, so you can kind of get a parent perspective from this as well.
Are you going to speak? Are they going to speak to us?
Well, I, I'm, I'll ask questions, I'll interview him.
Good. All right.
Mr. Clark, can you explain some of the day-to-day interactions you have in your class with students?
So I, I think one of the greatest things about this program, and Angela talked about on the SEL portion of, of what We the People is, 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 this is not just a class, it's a family. And at the same time, it's also a sports team, but there's no bench. Everyone has to play. And because of that, the camaraderie that the students have with each other is, is like nothing else you can have in an academic experience, because the, the success and failure of, of them as a team revolves around each one of them and each one of their strengths. And as Angela also pointed out, the, the different units, and they're, they're very different in what they do, one can't exist without the other. And so the camaraderie the students have across their learning units also is, is very important, as well as the competition or the friendly competition they have between their groups of which one's better and which one's smarter and which one presents better, and then those things that kids have. But it, it, it's those types of things that build the memories and, and the, the interactions that we have. And, um, in, in terms of day-to-day, the, the class is, is, I guess, more engaged because the buy-in is, is much higher, because the stakes, I guess, for them, because they care about what, what they're learning and demonstrating their learning is different than performing in a test or writing a paper that only a teacher reads. And having members of the community come in, not just in practice, but also in the competitions, um, really expounds that, that passion for, for them, understanding it in ways that, that most Americans have no idea.
Can you give us an example of a student who you've seen kind of exponential growth, maybe personally, um, because of the class?
So, um, I have a student who is currently, works at Costco, many of you have probably seen him. His name's Ian Dover. Ian Dover is on the autistic spectrum, and Ian's about to graduate with a master's in geology. And, and Ian, when you first met him, couldn't, it was very difficult to put two sentences together in his presentation and his cross X. And while he still speaks with a speech impediment, um, the, the, his love for learning is, is evident in every conversation you have with him. And I'm so very proud of, of where he is and what he has done over, over his lifetime, especially overcoming some of the disabilities that he has. Um, I have another student, her name is Lindsay Slocum. She was the top Western skier in the West Coast, and she had a spinal cord accident. And she was, she was in a coma for a week and, um, still disabled today, and to watch her to be able to compete at a high level and, and, and still have to overcome the, the disabilities that she had is people I'm very, very proud of. And then, um, Ms. Jackson in the back, who, who couldn't put two sentences together without being nervous, is now the president of the ASUN at the University of Nevada. So there's definitely all of those different things put together, and, and that's, that's just three examples of students I'm unbelievably proud of.
Um, we'd love for you to hear a little bit about the experience from the students. If you don't mind, we're going to get up and, and bring them up here to tell you about the program. So, thank you.
Thank you all, as you're, as you're getting relocated there. Thank you for the many hours that you dedicate to these students and their, their growth and their learning. Welcome, students.
Hi.
Let's see, we have Hannah and Ben and...
McKenna.
McKenna, okay. Do you want to ask each other questions, or would you like us to ask you questions?
Yeah, I guess we can all talk. Well, one of my favorite things is that, that you said, uh, you know, Mr. Clark students, and I feel like I'll always be one of Mr. Clark's students, so. But from Mr. Clark's little anecdote, this program completely changed my life, and I don't know, um, how else to say that or fully express it, but I think for everyone that goes through it, it makes you realize your own personal power and create some sort of agency inside of you. And for me, ever since I've taken that class and being in that class, it's just created this fire inside of me to want to make a positive difference or want to make an impact in some way. Because of it, I got to get involved in, um, political campaigns. I worked on the campaign, uh, for Washoe County Question One in 2016, and then I got involved in, yes. And then getting involved, um, in student government at the University of Nevada and now serving as president. Looking back, I, I can't think of one experience that's changed my life more than that one. And then too, with that, um, it's really made me learn how to love learning. I don't think I've, I've ever learned the way that I did in We the People, and now, um, going into university, it's not about getting a good grade on a test, it's not about, um, you know, trying to get a certain GPA, it's really about how can you, um, take in all this material and make connections and uncover and discover new parts of the world that you never even knew existed. That's what it's really about for me. So completely changed my outlook on, on the world.
Oh, that's great. Thank you, Hannah.
Um, it completely altered my life. Before I was in We the People, I wanted to be a doctor. And then I didn't really have a strong desire to join We the People when I actually applied, but I just thought I'd throw my hat in the ring, and it turned out to be one of the best decisions I ever made, because now I don't want to be a lawyer, but I need that. And I want to learn and I need to learn, and I read the news every morning as an 18-year-old, which no one, no one does. And I, I constantly want to learn more, and just as Hannah said, I don't care about the test grades anymore. I don't care about the homework grades or anything, as long as I'm learning the information, I don't care. So this, the experience has completely altered my life in profound ways.
Yeah, I think, um, for me, the coolest thing is, I'm in a sorority on campus, and I'll sit and the girls will ask me, you know, what's going on in the world? Like, who should I be voting for? And like, what's going on? And I'll sit there and I can explain it to them. And I can say, you know, you can go to this website and you can look at the ballot measures, or you can look at the different questions, and here's what's going on, and here's what they think. And I think that's something that We the People brings you, that as a 19-year-old, that's just not common. And you can sit in a class, and we were joking about it before, we listened to some of our professors, and we go, hmm, I could think of a Supreme Court case that maybe doesn't back up what you're saying. But it's one of those cool things, you know? Like, you sit in class and you can question and you can actually understand what's going on and not just kind of be that deer in the headlights going, what is happening?
Do you have a favorite memory maybe to share?
Oh, boy.
I have to say, so I was a Unit Four, I was really close with my unit, Mr. Clark was my coach. So not only is he a father figure for me, but my unit are my best friends, and we're all across the country, um, but we seem to manage to talk still. And we had the opportunity to go to Nationals and those late nights laughing and crying because we were so nervous for our military industrial complex question that we didn't even get. So you can see, I still very fired up on that one. But it's that kind of stuff, you know, you find the jokes in it. I don't know, those are memories that I will never get anywhere else.
I agree.
That's great. What, what's, what's next for all of you? How do you take this and, and do something next with it?
Well, I think for me, I, I, it's made me want to dedicate my life to improving civic education for everyone. Um, I've gotten to do really cool things at the university with, um, improving civic learning and democratic engagement on university campuses across the country. It's like, it's been so eye-opening, there's so many ways, um, to make a difference in that way, and to give more people the opportunity to have a voice and to get involved and to feel like anything that they do can make an impact.
Uh, I would say the biggest difference now is that, uh, it's kind of weird, because I, right now I'm on, uh, Kate Marshall's campaign for Lieutenant Governor, I'm her finance staffer, and it's amazing how when you throw Mr. Clark's name around and you say, "I was one of Mr. Clark's We the People kids," that is, it's, it's, so, people take it seriously. They, they think you know your stuff, you know your law, you know your Supreme Court cases, and they'll take it seriously. And you get opportunities from it, and you meet people like Ms. Simon Holland. And, and it, it furthers you in civic education and in law and in politics so much, more than you would ever think.
Yeah, I don't think, I'm, I'm not scared to get out in the world anymore, because I understand how policy works and I want to learn more about it, and I'm a political science major, that's what I want to do, I want to go out there and change things. But I think I'm not as afraid to get out there, because I have the confidence knowing that I learned something and I have the ability to learn more about it. So I can sit and look at things going through and say, yeah, I want to be the person doing that someday. And it's not this big fear anymore.
Yeah. And I think so much of it's the structure of the program, but it's also all of the teachers and the coaches that really make the difference. They really care about each individual student and their success. And, um, I've gotten the opportunity to, to get to coach at different high schools in, um, in Washoe County, and it's, it's the same thing, just so many caring, awesome, awesome teachers.
Trustee, comments? Yes, Dr. Taylor.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, Hannah, you know I have to say something. I've just, I've had the, uh, first of all, three of you are very impressive. So, Mr. Clark, fantastic job. I've always heard about We the People and said, I should get involved and help with that. I'm going to have to do something this year, so you email me and, and I'll be, email me and, and certainly, I, I'd love to. And you talked about how, 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 um, how impressed you were with it, with it last year. I don't know if I'm qualified to be a, be a judge for it.
Be prepared to be intimidated by the knowledge level of these students.
I'm, I'm pretty intimidated already, so I might just need to buy some popcorn and, 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 and check it out, but...
Bring a lunch.
Yeah, bring a lunch. Sorry, that was inside. But, um, but I just have to say, Hannah, to hear how far you've come, because I, I didn't know that Hannah, but I've met you as this Hannah, and to see that, um, that being involved in such a great program and, and to watch, um, the confidence with which all three of you speak, and I've seen you lead things in just a group of thongs of thousands of students in, in really difficult times, and be very comfortable and, and, and very articulate and, and very confident. I mean, to see that, that's the kind of thing students get out of We the People, and to see all three of you display that here is just, makes me really, really proud as a board member to have, have the programs in, in our district.
Yes, Trustee Frankel.
I'm trying not to cry, just because it gives me so much hope for the future. I, and I, and actually, you know, when you said, Ben, that you need to get a chance to meet all these wonderful people, what I wanted to say to you is, we get to meet you. Because right now, you all are the future in this country and this, the discourse or lack thereof that we see around us, what you all are learning, you can lead us, and you need to lead us, and you need to teach us, and you need to keep going, and you need to, you need to call us adults, as, 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 no, you are adults as well, but young adults, young adults need to put us in our place when it comes to dialogue sometimes, and need to tell us that there's information that we're not talking about, we're talking about opinion, and you all are focusing on information and history and facts. I was a political science major myself and passionate about the Constitution. My family came here from a third world country that didn't have the democracy we have. So to listen to your passion about that, I say thank you for continuing to share that. And like I said, just keep, 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 uh, letting us meet you, letting other people, because we, we may have titles, but you all are incredible, and you're the leaders of today and tomorrow. So thank you.
Any other, uh, trustee comments?
Yes, Ananti.
So I'm a part of We the People at my school, but I also take, um, first period IB history. So I have the perspective of having both classes and seeing the dynamic of each classroom and how much, how different it is, and seeing how much it affects each student. My sixth period peers, they're way more interactive, they're way more excited to go to class because we get to learn so much about the Constitution. We're learning way more life skills and seeing how we're going to apply to it on top of, um, preparing for competition and all of the fun stuff. And then I get to see how my first period peers react to everything that we're learning. Obviously, we love learning about the Manchurian Crisis and everything, but I'm sure, the way that, but the way that We the People affects students at our, well, the students that are a part of it, it's, it's really, it's amazing, because the first seven weeks of school, seeing how these kids are reacting to that class and seeing how much of a positive impact it's making on their, on their life, it's so amazing. So this program, yes, it's having a major effect in Reno, from what I've been seeing, but it's also having a really large effect at Ushere, and I'm sure it's having the same effect at every other high school.
Thanks for sharing.
I will share a quick story of how it affected me. So I, I have, um, I've judged a couple of times, and, uh, Ben was, uh, one of the, one of the groups that, uh, we had the opportunity to work with. And the knowledge level that you all command and the sense of competence you have and the ability to ad lib pull a case out of history or, you know, a relevant, uh, piece from the Federalist Papers is, is just, you know, as, as my colleague, Trustee Frankel said, you are the hope, you are the future. And I, I can't say enough about how much we need to bring that to more students in our district. And I, I know, I have absolutely no doubt that you all will continue to spread this. I hope you'll go to Washington on internships and, you know, take advantage of all those opportunities. But one thing it did for me, I, I went home and I read Alexander Hamilton's biography. Ron Chernow, you know, all 800 and some pages, and, uh, and it inspired me so much, uh, to actually learn the real story. And I'm reading the Federalist Papers, and, uh, and it absolutely can't be more relevant. There's nothing that you can learn that can be more relevant than what our rights and what our liberties are in this country, not only because it's important to be able to have that factual basis, but also to share with other people what a privilege it is that we have this Constitution and these gifts. So, thank you. And I also got to see Hamilton last week. Woo-hoo! And if you haven't seen it, it's just wonderful to see the story of one of our founding fathers that, uh, certainly for all of you, uh, who had to read the Federalist Papers and commit them to memory, um, you know, is so important. But absolutely, nothing can be more important, particularly today, uh, as many of our, our rights and responsibilities seem to be in jeopardy and, and under attack. So thank you for committing all of that. And thank you to the teachers, the parents, um, all of the folks, the volunteers who support and coach you, uh, because we couldn't do this work without those 140 volunteers and, and many more. So we're so grateful, uh, for everybody's investment in this. So thanks, thanks for taking your time today, too. And just congratulations for being awesome, all of you. Okay, any last words from any of the other folks that joined us today? Ms. Jackson or Mr. Martindale? Before we close out and we have a public comment, yes?
I'm Denny Martindale. I had the privilege back in 1988 to watch the We the People program be adopted into this district. I don't know if you remember a program called Partners in Education. I was the chair of that organization at the particular time, and it was brought to us as a program we should be looking into. And we adopted that and we had one school, Reed High School. And you can see where it's built today. I have the opportunity, I, I'm retired, so I get to spend whatever time I want. In fact, this evening, I'll spend my time watching my four kids in my unit write about the challenges of being a citizen. How do we get young people to start to vote? What are the challenges we see? And, you know, I'll, I'll give you the one key word that they're working on right now is trust. And so I'm going to watch them tonight write their testimony for the first question for district competition. That's how a volunteer, that's like, that's what you do, is you spend your time with young kids that have phenomenal minds, have tremendous energy, and to see the things they do. You watch them from the time we call them pups until the time we say, okay, there's your wings, we'll see you. Um, it's incredible to watch growth, absolutely incredible. But what's more incredible is to see the quality of education you're getting, and yes, I am biased, but the quality of education you're getting from the teachers that are teaching this is absolutely unreal. And you should be proud of the teachers that you have that are in the departments. And again, I, I know I'm biased, but I've been around the school district a long, long, long time, and I've seen a lot of very, very good things happen in this district. And this is another one, that this is a program that you should be very proud of. I mean, three years ago, I had the opportunity to look at my kids and tell them that they finished second in the nation. This year, Mr. Carlin had the opportunity to do the same thing, only, you know, Unit One, which is an extremely difficult unit, finished fifth in the nation.
Gosh.
So we're, we're on the level of everybody else in this nation as far as how well we can do. And our kids rise to the occasion every time they do it. And they do it with professionalism, they do it with pride, and I couldn't be more proud to be able to say, hey, I get the opportunity to learn from them every day. And I just sit back and say, yeah, you're doing a good job.
That's great.
You know, but the things they bring forth is just absolutely incredible. So thank you for having this program in the school district, because it is a shining star.
Thank you. Thanks, thanks, Denny. Did you want to say something, Ms. Jackson?
I'm Tammy Jackson, I'm Hannah's mom, and so I'm biased, you know, totally. But I also, um, forgive me, I'll make it quick, because I didn't have the blessing of having... I also, forgive me, I'll make it quick, because I didn't have the blessing of having Mr. Clark and his team help me with public speaking. But as you were asking about the before and after, you know, my daughter, We the People's been in our lives for four years, and Hannah, when she, you know how you apply, maybe at the other schools too, but it's an application process, and you get interviewed and stuff, and it's a really big deal. Her junior year, she thought about it, thought about it, wanted to do it, talked herself out of it, went back and forth a million times. And we'd talk about it, and I'd say, "Honey, you know, you only have one senior year, you only have one opportunity, you know, do this, do that." And she was like, "I just, I'm afraid I'm not smart enough, and I'm gonna cry." But, you know, it doesn't, it just doesn't matter. You have that drive, that will. Mr. Clark and his wonderful team, they all, it doesn't matter who is the head of your unit, you know, they all take care of each other, they all support each other, and I just can't tell you the change. She's still wonderful, always has been wonderful, but just the confidence. And she's done things that she never, ever would have done had she not had We the People. So, thank you guys for supporting it, and I hope, I wish that one day it'll be everywhere, because they need it.
Thank you so much, Ms. Jackson. And congratulations to all of you, and hopefully some of you will be elected officials somewhere, hopefully school board members somewhere someday. So, thank you. We do have a public comment.
John Appolito.
Welcome back, Mr. Appolito.
Thank you very much. My name is John Appolito, and I still have three kids in the district. And I'd like to thank you for the We the People program, and agree with pretty much everything I heard from the teachers, the students, the volunteers. In my house, We the People is required. My oldest did it. He is currently a junior at an Ivy League college. He made the debate team. They took 14 out of 200 approximately. He made that team. He also got a very desirable internship for next summer. And the big reason for that is because of We the People. He might tell you he's still one of the top 100 smartest people in the world, but that's not it. It's We the People. So, thank you very much for that. And my number-two daughter, right now, is in We the People in Incline High, and she's working very hard, and I'm really looking forward to watch her compete. And Mr. Clark, I'm really pulling for your team to come in second. And my number-three and number-four child are both in middle school, and they're getting ready. They know they have to do it, as well as the Rotary Speech Competition. So, I appreciate the opportunity to come up here. Instead of telling you what you're doing wrong, I'd like to tell you what you're doing right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John. Thank you. Okay, any other comments? Okay, well, I think you've recruited some new judges, so put the word out. And some other folks can be equally intimidated as I was, and I'm sure, well, Neil, being the competent lawyer that you are, probably knew a lot more than I did going in the room. Anyway, thank you for taking time out, all of you, and thank you just for making this program such an excellent reflection on our district and a great thing for our community. Okay, anything else on that, otherwise? Thanks. We'll move on in our agenda, then. And Lindsay, you were gonna tell me who needs to go first, but Tiffany's up next. Okay. Well, we've got some people that need to be out, yeah, so let's go quickly, and if you need to go, just, okay. Welcome, Ms. Young. Thank you so much for your patience, and we appreciate you being here to talk about equity and diversity for the district, which is a big priority for us, and we welcome you.
Thank you for the record. I am Tiffany Young, the Coordinator of Equity and Diversity for Washoe County School District. And I was asked to come today for a couple of reasons, obviously to give an update on the plan, but kind of also share an overview around the work that's happening in equity and diversity. I also want to say thank you to President Simon Holland for coming and sitting and meeting with me, and just getting an overview of what's happening in our department and the work completed. And I want to say hello to Ananti. I've known her since she was in middle school, so I'm really excited to see her here on the Student Advisory Board. So, what you have in front of you is the framework of equity as we look at the work across the district, and I will quickly go through this. But when we talk about the work of equity and the department's stance, we're talking about the culture, the practice, and the leadership of what happens across all systems. And so, we want to make sure that we clearly explain the fact that equity is about the system, the entire district. And so, oftentimes, when we have conversations around equity, around cultural competency, some of our minds silo-thinking into just race and ethnicity, but we need to understand it's a systems approach. And within that system, there are four pieces that we can look at that complete the conversation around relationships, relevancy, rigor, and expectations. And so, when we talk about equity across the district, you can literally take this framework and lay it across any department, any school building, any program, any practice, and use the understanding of how equity should work. When we look at equity in this definition, from an educational standpoint, we're talking about that every student is provided the individual needs that they have to reach or succeed a common standard, and that being graduation. Our goal is to graduate students. What you have there, I apologize. So, if you have resources, use them. I'm gonna use mine. It is very small print, but what we have there is, because the work of equity is so large, it's really difficult to cut it up and make it really small to present. So, what I would like to share with you is, what you see at the top is really the mission statement for the department, is that equity and diversity will promote, develop, and support equitable practices, policies for a safe, inclusive school-community system. Additionally, we will provide assurance of access, representation, and meaningful participation for all. That's a lot. But if we take that framework that I shared with you before, and you look at the culture, the practice, and the leadership, we've broken up the work to see what the mission of the department includes specifically. And that's around examining and reducing bias of curriculum and instruction, to integrate these experiences and contributions of diverse cultures and races, ensuring that the curriculum with high-yield methods and practices, our teaching resources in a culturally responsive manner. We need to ensure that when we look at curriculum and what's provided in our schools and our classrooms, whether it's books and materials, posters on our wall, that it is truly representative of the students and the community that it surrounds. Additionally, under practice, we talk about providing professional learning. And that's gonna be an anchor of a lot of the conversation that I have here this morning, is that our department has put forth a great deal of professional learning across this district. We are in conversations about training for the board, and we're looking forward to that happening. Thank you. And we're also excited about the level of work that's happening at the chief level, the deputy chief level, the area superintendent level, and that's being filtered down through principals and working locally at our schools. And in the leadership piece, we need to ensure that we have honest conversations about the disparities, any discrimination, disproportionate practices, and inequities. What I will tell you is, oftentimes, the conversation is, "Why now?" And, "Why are we doing this work now?" And my answer is, "If not now, when?" We need to understand that the structures, the outcomes, the systems that we have in place did not just show up today. They've been present for some time, and we have to boldly, as Washoe County School District is doing, lean into this work, but we have to do it in a capacity-building manner. We have to ensure that the work that we're doing is about building systems, and not punitive and tearing down people. The challenge is, because you have honest conversations around inequities and disproportionality and disparities, people feel like it may be negative and punitive. But it's necessary to have hard conversations so that we can get to better solutions. So, if you'll see at the top, in the gold on the left side, this is the current work that's happening in the department. And I want to be sure that I make another thing clear. There's been several conversations about the growth of the Equity and Diversity Department, from a staff of two to a staff of 11. There are only five full-time people in my department that are serving the entire Washoe County School District. So, when you think about that, we have to understand that there are five full-time people, again, serving what's happening across this entire district. So, there's myself and four other Equity and Diversity Specialists, one of which is an Indian Education Specialist. If you just take the bulk of that work, starting at policy on down, we are working across policies, professional learning, looking at deep equity, students, families, staff support, a task force, working with the university, school summits, multicultural events, student graduation advocates, for serving our Native American, African-American, and Pacific Islander students. We're serving the Title VI Indian Education Program, supporting the four fundamentals, which is Fundamental III, climate and engagement. We also work with CASL nationally, so the SEO work that's happening nationally, we're focusing on for the Equity Work Group. We're doing Equity Walkthroughs at schools, serving on the Equitable Access Task Force, presenting at national conferences, expanding knowledge and awareness across all systems for equity, culturally responsive practices, implicit bias, and disproportionality. So, that is currently what's taking place with the people that we have. As we look at this work and plan over the next three years, between 2018 and 2021, we want to maintain that we're developing a system that has a clear mechanism for tracking data. We can look at just the number of people that attend trainings, but we also need to look at the quantitative and the qualitative data. What are the statements? What are their responses? What are the voices, values, and belief systems that we have for the individuals that are impacting our classrooms? So, when we talk about the capacity-building work, we have been supported by both our superintendent, our deputy superintendent, and having conversations at the level with area superintendents about what needs to happen. Our leadership team has gone through some trainings, but we understand that that is not a one-and-done. It needs to be continuous and ongoing. When we talk about the voice and messaging, we're looking at books that roll out across our schools, and being very intentional about building capacity of principals to be able to facilitate discussion across their schools as well. The central office, including human resources, our school police, several other departments are engaging in the training again, with the understanding that it's not one-and-done, but ongoing. The board is listed. I'm still here, waiting on you. So, gonna get that done as well. All right. And so, when we look at areas that happen with our principals, we have 16 hours of training that's approved by the Board of Education. We have a boot camp that's mandatory for all ARL candidates. We, again, continue to support Fundamental III. We are examining data through a data lens. If you all have seen it, or will see it, at the Data Summit, Equity is at the forefront of all data books that have been printed for all of the schools. They have language, lenses, resources, and materials. There should not be an administrator in the district that says they don't have any information about what equity is or where we're going. And so, we've scaled back some things, because as I mentioned, there are five people that are handling this work, so we have to be honest about what is that going to look like. So, we intentionally are going area by area, and what the leadership teams are doing at those schools, how we can support and build capacity for them in that space, and then help them roll out plans. So, as we get through the next couple of years, that plan will morph and shift, because we have to kind of be honest about who we have and what capacity we, as a department, can fulfill across the district. So, this last chart, which is really, really small, which I apologize for again, but this is some of our attempt, working with the supports from Ben's office, just to give you a snapshot for 2016-17 school year and 2018-19 school year. So, if you look at the 2016-17 school year, we had a total of 537 educators go through training. That also included departments where we are directly training MTSS, SCL, working with the Saturday cafes through LTL and volunteer services. In all, over 200 hours of professional development were provided to more than 550 Washoe County School District educators in 2016 and 2017, when I had four staff. That does not mean that, because I have more, give me more. Just kidding. But in the 2017-18 school year, what you'll see is, there were 609 educators that went through training. And again, we're talking about unduplicated numbers. What you have to know is that our training is not just one design setting in the school. We come into schools and serve schools. We have trainings off-site. We train outside, obviously, of contract hours for teachers. But our goal and our role is to build capacity, and understand that when we do this work around equity, we do the work around cultural competency, it is not solely about race and ethnicity, but it is inclusive of. And we have to have honest conversations about some of the system challenges that we have, so that we can have system change. I say in all my trainings, that shift happens, S-H-I-F as in Frank, T, shift happens. And in order for us to shift, we have to be willing to lean into this work and lean into the processes. Thank you. Questions?
Okay, questions?
How was that, Lindsay?
All right. Did you want to say something?
I don't have a question.
Okay. Well, you can make a comment. Yeah, go ahead, and then, Dr. Taylor.
So, first, I just want to thank Tiffany publicly for this heavy lift. We've been doing a lot of work around equity and really understanding where our staff is and where we want to go, and really understanding that equity is inclusive of race. And sometimes people automatically think it is only about race, but when we look at policies and processes as we are, in addition, there are subcommittees looking at things right now. What doors are we closing because of things that we have created as a system, and what doors are we opening? I had the luxury of sitting with Lauren Ford's group Friday at LTL, and I was a little nervous about it, because people don't always say what they want to say when the superintendent is sitting in a group. But they were okay, and people leaned in, and it was just amazing to hear the conversations around things that are unequitable practices that we actually have in our district as principals, and how do we fix those things? But also, the uncomfortableness around talking to people that you supervise when they use deficit language about those kids, or poor kids, or these kids, as we create high expectations for individuals. And I've challenged Tiffany to challenge this system. When we use deficit language, it might not be intentional. In fact, it is not intentional. But we have to be trained to change that as we talk about looking at the promise in every boy and girl versus the risk, so we can get to where we want to be. So, thank you on your department, thank the whole system. Like, we are trying to all lean in as chiefs, as building principals, as we funnel this. This is not just about schools and kids. This is about the Washoe County School District. There should be equitable practices when people walk into HR. There should be equitable practices when people work in transportation. So, it is the entire system looking at, not just about the relationship between students and teachers, but the relationship the district has with each other and the community as we do this work.
Yes, thank you.
Well said. Well said. Dr. Taylor?
Thank you, Madam President. And again, Tiffany, I want to start just by commending you and the growth since I've been on this board of, not just of the office, because that just seems to imply numbers, but the breadth, the reach. That's what I'm looking for, the reach of the office. And I really commend, really commend the broad approach that you, I've heard you say that many times myself, to make it very clear that equity means everybody. It doesn't exclude anybody, because so many times, people think equity means everybody but the white guys. But, I mean, but you know, it's everybody. It's being a great place for, really, for everybody. And you lead that, and you model that, and lead your staff in that way. And I think that's really important, because it's such an uncomfortable issue for so many of us, everybody, us. And so, to really, you know, continue to talk about it from an inclusive standpoint, meaning including everybody. One, I want to commend you for that. Two, as I want to say, you talked about developing better tracking mechanisms, right? Can you talk a little bit more about, you said qualitative and quantitative, what does that kind of look like?
So, and every time that we make contact in any professional learning manner, we complete a pre-assessment, and then we close out with the post-assessment. And then, each session, we also collect exit ticket data. And so, right now, we just have a whole lot of data. And we need to put it in a manageable format that it can be reported. And so, we've been working with people in Ben's department, who are awesome, because I've just kind of said, "Here." And they've said, "Okay, let's figure it out. What do you want this to look like?" And so, right now, we can tell you numbers, and we can give you, like, up to my height, which is 5'2", what a good shoe on one day. But I can give you up to my height and all of the exit tickets and surveys. But I think the power in the surveys is what is key. Often, I share with our superintendent, our deputy superintendent, in some of our monthly meetings, that these are the voices that are coming out from our administrators. And what we have to understand is that just because you have this voice doesn't mean you're this horrible person, we're in this equity work. If you can tell me where you are, I can meet you there, and I can work with you. But if I don't know where you are, I can't build your capacity. And so, it's great that you show up and you complete the 16 hours, but I need you to lean into the process. And that's the part that people need to understand, is we can carry our PhDs, and we can carry all the knowledge levels and experiences. We can even carry the amount of work we've done in these spaces, but you still can grow. And even us, as a department, we are continually growing. And even us as a department, we are continually growing to build our capacity. And I've got an awesome team that supports that work.
Fantastic. If I may just kind of sum up a little bit, just a couple of things. What, and I know with the board, we're going to be switching over some, President Simon Holland explained that we're going to do something in terms of this year to make sure, because it's been on our other agenda items to get things going, but then we'll really lean in more once we have the new board is seated. So thank you for giving us a little way to kind of at least get us started. But we do want, we want the new board to be able to take advantage of the whole thing as well. But what else, other than we're going to model it because we're the one that put it in the strategic plan and modeled ourselves? What else could you use from the board to help in this work? I know this is a heavy lift.
Great question. Let's talk. Just kidding. Honestly, capacity is a challenge, and I know that we're budget constrained so we could have that conversation. But more than anything is the board needs to, I would appreciate, and it would be helpful if the board takes the stance. And the stance is not that this is a negative thing, and we have to kind of move away from that it is uncomfortable, because if you continually tell someone that it's uncomfortable, they're going to walk in and automatically assume to be uncomfortable. So what the board can do is own this work. And the board can say that we are intentional as a district that we're having these conversations. We're intentionally leaning into this process. We're intentionally going to talk about the inequities and recognize that we have some unconscious patterns that are leading to some unconscious consequences, but we're going to intentionally fix them. And it's not going to take a timeline. That's the hard part of Equity work. It's not going to happen overnight. I don't believe that it's all going to happen in the time that I'm going to be here in this district. But also accept and expect the fact that the non-closure is this work is ongoing, and I'm okay with that.
That's great.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Other questions? Other questions? I want to thank you, Tiffany, for choosing to bring your talents and stay and commit to the Washoe County School District because I know you are very well-respected in your field and a superstar. And we're really lucky that you bring this here. And I shared this with Trustee Taylor yesterday that, you know, I've been around government and I've been around management and I've been around lots of these things for many years, been around national stuff. And I really feel that the reason that I am doing this school board job right now is because of this work about equity and diversity, how much I'm learning as a person about how much more we can do for our students and for our society on these issues. I really appreciated the LTL speaker who said, you know, "Who's going to decide what children get left behind?" We are not, we're not going to stand for that in this district. We are not going to leave anybody behind, and we are going to, we're going to make this happen. So thank you for the great work you're doing, your team. And I appreciated the conversation you and I had. It was really wonderful.
Thank you.
Other comments? Questions? Okay, well, oh, yes, Trustee Frankel.
And I hope that we're going to be able to do. I know we've talked about doing the diversity training for the board for a really long time, and I won't be here, and neither will John after December, but I'm looking forward to that. And I too want to thank you for the work. And I think the thing that I've always really appreciated about the way you approach this work and the way your team in this district approaches this work is from that standpoint of the multiple lunges and the intersectionality among the different forms of oppression, but also recognizing that, I know, I appreciate your saying that they don't always have to be uncomfortable, but the reality is some of those conversations are hard, and that leaning in process isn't always, you know, really warm and fuzzy, but it's a real conversation. And how to do it and the intersection with SCL, I think, is a great mix because how do we have a respectful conversation where we listen to each other and learn from each other and recognize what we don't know and what our biases are? I've always really valued that about the focus and the way that you've approached this work. And so thank you for all that you do for this district and for all you do for our kids and our staff.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, to be continued.
Yes.
We're hoping to have a sort, and part of the reason why we talked about delaying the full 16-hour course until after the first of the year is that we don't want to start and stop and then have half, you know, two board members not have been part of the first. So Tiffany's going to do a sort of a custom mini-work for us that will get scheduled before you all leave because we definitely want to... What? No, we're not talking that way, Trustee Feimster. But, yeah, but anyway, we will, we will be, we will be with you, and I know you will be with us on this journey. So thank you so much.
Yep, long as I get a paycheck, I'm putting, holding your feet to the fire. Have a wonderful day. Thank you.
Oh, golly. All right, thank you, Tiffany. I know folks might want a stretch, a quick, okay, five, and you know, I'll be after you in five minutes.
You better bring an army.
I am bringing an army. I'm bringing somebody. I'll bring John Epalito after you, right, John? Okay. We do have a quorum, so we're going to go ahead and get started on our next presentation, which is from Fund Our Future Nevada regarding adequate funding for schools, yay, to support student success and possible action to adopt Washoe County School District Board Resolution 18-007, a resolution to support quality education for all Nevada public students. Superintendent, are you introducing this as well? You're listed as a presenter.
Lindsay and I are tag teaming.
All right, Ms. Lindsay Anderson. Please go ahead.
Thank you. President Simon Holland, Lindsay Anderson, and Board Superintendent. I'm going to take you back a little bit to the conversation you had this morning from your budget workshop, and this is, I think, a really timely conversation to be having in light of the budget workshop that you had this morning. So Fund Our Future is here, and they're going to introduce themselves. I don't want to steal any of their thunder, but I just want to set it up in the sense of, we know that education funding, per pupil funding, is a statewide issue. This is not a conversation only happening in the Washoe County School District. This is happening in districts across the state. And when we go to Carson City, we're not in a vacuum. We aren't the only ones asking for something. And so to the extent that we can have advocates that cover different perspectives, different parts of the state, perhaps are a little bit more grassroots than something like a school district, we make a concerted effort to partner with those organizations. So Fund Our Future has presented to the Nevada Association of School Superintendents. I know NASB and others that they're going to talk about. And in fact, part of the reason they're in a hurry is they're going to the Carson City School Board this evening to present there as well. And so they're primarily from Las Vegas, but I don't want to steal their thunder. So they're here physically for us today to do a presentation. They do have a resolution that they're asking you to consider as part of the board agenda item today, and a few slides to go through about the need for additional resources to fund education in Nevada. So I'll turn it over and let them introduce themselves. So turn your...
Hello, my name's Amanda Morgan. I'm the Legal Director of Educate Nevada Now, powered by the Rogers Foundation. We're based out of Las Vegas. We've done a lot of work with school districts in the past. We were the folks that fought the Education Savings Account Initiative back a few years back, so you might remember us from that. But now we're working to make sure there's adequate funding for all students. And I wanted to, you're all just passing along. To go on, go ahead.
Hi there, my name is Karen Shea, and I'm with Hope for Nevada. And Hope for Nevada is a parent advocacy group that started, we actually met with parent leaders long ago, four years ago, when we started forming, and got some advice from them. We wanted to make sure that we were able to bridge communication between our elected officials and our parents and teachers and families within the schools so that every other year when they go to make laws about what happens in our schools, that they have real boots-on-the-ground anecdotal information from families so that they make the right
I'm Michaela Tonking. I work with Educate Nevada Now. I'm in the northern Nevada region, so I see more of me. I work on data and advocacy for them. And I previously worked for APA, who had done previous school funding formulas here in the state. And I attended a Washoe County School District. So I'm back.
You're supposed to say it, "I'm back." Oh, this is fancy, okay. So thank you so much for hearing our presentation today. I'm so hopeful, especially because of the presentations, not only your budget presentation from this morning, but the ones that you just heard earlier, JAG, and We the People, and even the conversations around equity. It's imperative that we all understand that our children, what they can achieve has no bounds, and that it's important for us to support whatever it is that they can achieve in an equitable manner. So Fund Our Future, basically, I just said that, you know, they, every single student, whether they're north, south, east, west, urban, rural, every single student in the state of Nevada deserves to have appropriate resources so that they can reach their full academic potential, they can graduate to become college and career-ready. And our mission is that we are a coordinated effort that is statewide. So often, I feel like our students feel they're the casualty of either a north versus south, a rural versus urban, and we need to move beyond that. And I feel like that's kind of the strength of what Fund Our Future Nevada does. We're not just parent organizations. We are individual parents. We're students. We're teachers. We're administrators. We are lawyers. We're other organizations. We're school boards. We're superintendents. And so with a united voice, I think this is the way that we are really going to make effective, long-term, permanent change for our students in the state. So we have three tenets that we believe. We believe that we need in this state to develop a modernized and to fully fund eventually along a timeline, a cost or evidence-based funding formula, where we have research and evidence that we make sure that we're meeting adequately the needs of all our students. We feel that new revenue and any revenue, like the marijuana tax or the IP1 room tax that has been dedicated for educational purposes, actually needs to go to education and supplement education. And we also know that coming along with that, we need to ensure accountability for that So what does, what value does Nevada place on its students? We always have a long laundry list of lists of things that we're at the bottom of. We have the largest class sizes in the country. We have one of the most regressive funding formulas. We are one of two states that fund on historical expenditures. We know that from the Augenblick study that was just done, that we're woefully underfunding all of our students. We know that teachers have the third worst salaries in the country when we are accounting for the massive amount of students that they have in each of their classrooms. And then we continue to rank very low on quality counts and other reports that come out yearly. We have an F in funding, education funding. We rank 48th in education funding, and I believe we have an F in student chances to succeed as well, which is really disturbing, and it's time we stop that.
All right, Amanda Morgan for the record. So I want to talk a little bit about why we are where we are. And this is going to take us all the way back to 1967. This is the year that Elvis got married. So it's been a while. Nevada actually has the oldest funding formula in the country, which is amazing. I just learned that a couple days ago from you, and it blew me away. I knew it was old, but I didn't know it was the oldest. And Nevada Plan's really troubling for a lot of reasons, but we identified some major problems. And we've identified these problems through talking to CFOs, talking to superintendents, really trying to understand the budget and understand how schools are funded in the state. You know, what we learned is that the Nevada Plan fails to take into account the actual cost of educating students. So if you have a new mandate, if you have safe and respectful school, a learning environment, or, you know, class size restrictions, or common core, all these different things, the Nevada Plan doesn't care. It just gives you what it has. It bases it on what they spent last year, and they've been doing that since 1967. And you can just think about how things have changed in education since 1967. It also fails to take into account the unique needs of certain students. You know, we have no weights or no additional funding if your student is an English learner, or free and reduced-price lunch, or gate. There's all these different things where we kind of have these like patchwork categorical programs, but we don't really have a way in our formula to make sure all those students are funded. And it doesn't even keep up with actual inflation. I get really irritated by this point, and no one else cares about inflation, but I really do. But, you know, the way that they increase the funding for the formula is say, "Okay, what's consumer price index inflation?", which is like 1.5%, 2%. But when we talked to a lot of the CFOs in the districts, they said, "Look, it's really about 4.5% to 5%." So that means we're actually losing money each year. And people don't really understand that. Like, how do we have budget cuts? Didn't you all get this amount inflated? It doesn't really matter because we're not even keeping up with inflation, which is really problematic. So we have flat funding. And here's a chart showing the basic support guarantee. So this is the per pupil funding to districts from the state. Over the past 10 years, when you adjust it for just that bad inflation number, it's remained flat. So there's been no changes. And a lot of people say, "I don't understand how that's possible. We've had room tax money. We've had marijuana. We've had this, you know, groundbreaking commerce tax. I don't understand." Well, how it works is new money goes in and then flows out the bottom. So the state can actually allocate less money from its state general fund because it has these new revenue sources. So it's basically like pouring water into a bucket, and there's a big hole at the bottom. And, you know, I think this is kind of, it's a trick that's used in a lot of different states because everyone wants to raise money for kids. So it's, you know, things are advertised as we're going to put money towards kids, and it doesn't actually grow the pie. So I don't need to tell you all this stuff because you deal with it every day, but, you know, your district has faced a lot of financial problems. You faced a deficit, 10 years of budget deficits, you know, cuts to safety, cuts in transportation zones, reduction in school staff, increased class sizes. You've seen all this in real time. So, you know, these are the kind of things that are really impacted. So I want to talk a little bit about why Fund Our Future is different, and we talked about it being a statewide coalition. This is really, really important. It's so important that northern counties, rural counties, everyone really is involved in this. If it is just driven by Clark County, everything's going to go south, like literally and figuratively. I mean, it's really important to have you folks in the room because, you know, I talked to a legislator the other day that's based down south, and he said, "Oh, you know what? We could take some money from up north because they're doing okay." So there's a fundamental misunderstanding of the challenges in a lot of these counties up north from the folks down south. And they have a lot of power, and I know Clark County School District cares about this issue too, but they have a lot of power. And when push comes to shove, we really need to have every single person in the room talking about this. Like we said, we're the only organization focused on educating all students. We're not county-based. We're not based on, you know, particular interests. We care about every single student. We're actively proposing a change to the Nevada Plan, and I'll talk about that in a second. And we're grassroots. We do have some, you know, institutional members, but most of our members are just families, parents, teachers. We even have student members that care about this. So what we want to do with the counties, and we've talked to NASB and NAS, but we wanted to talk to every single school board, you know, anyone that would have us. We really think it's important as we, for us to work together this coming session. So that might be, you know, communicating together, having a really unified message going forward, you know, sharing data, really ensuring that, you know, the messaging really impacts all students, providing legislators guidance and support, and just knowledge. I think they really need help understanding this issue. And, you know, we're an unbiased third-party voice, as Lindsay mentioned, you know, we're not a district. It's not self-serving. We're not a union or anything like that. We're a coalition of a lot of different partners that really care about this issue. You know, we understand, and this is something that kind of gets thrown around a lot when people talk about increased funding. We understand that, you know, their budget deficits are the result of poor state funding and rising employee costs. It's not necessarily mismanagement. I know down south, that's all we hear. They don't need money. There's magically a billion dollars hid somewhere, you know. We hear all the different things. And yeah, you might find things that are wrong, but it's just not coming close to the actual need. We know that restricted use or categorical dollars, though they're good and often effective, they don't aid in the operations budget. The big chunk of school expenses cannot be covered by categorical dollars. We understand that there's a lot of underfunded and unfunded mandates on school districts, and they really take their toll. And that new revenue sources don't necessarily increase the pie, which we talked about. So as I said, there's a lot of different ways to collaborate. We've provided a resolution. We hope you all consider that. Some of the things we can do together, data... Some of the things we can do together, data, understanding the issues, making sure that we can message those to legislators and other advocates, being a unified force during the next legislative session, you know, joining the coalition, just showing your public support for what we're doing, and then helping us reach our community because I think that's really important, getting to the constituents that the legislators are going to have to answer to. So what are we doing? We're presenting, obviously. We have submitted several ob-eds, letters to the editor, press releases on various issues. We do social media, marketing campaign newsletters. We've presented to the legislative session with our official recommendations, and we present several community forums. We have two tomorrow, one in Washoe, one in Carson. And we're doing a statewide tour. As you can see, we're here. And here's some of the items that we've pushed on social media to get people to understand this issue a little bit better. So what is our official funding formula proposal? This is really the crux of what we're doing. Unless we fix the Nevada plan, anytime we talk about new revenue or any other issue, it's really going to, it's going to fall apart because we fundamentally have a plan that doesn't meet the needs of our students. So we believe that a formula should actually cost out the resources necessary for students to succeed. So what is expected of them? What are the standards? What's expected of schools or districts? What are all the things that we impose, whether it's the state imposing it or the federal government? What are all the things that are imposed on districts that actually cost money? If we say we want, you know, 20 to 1 class sizes, well, what does that actually cost? We can't just say it. We actually have to, you know, fund it, you know, or else it's not going to happen. And what a cost-based funding formula does is it creates what's called an adequacy target. So this was for each district. What is the amount that is necessary for us to provide that educational opportunity to those students? And every district will be different. You might have some of the counties, maybe mining counties, that are not that far from their target. And then you'll have counties, Washoe, White Pine, Clark, that might be further away from that target. But it's really transparent. We actually know. It ends the guessing game. It ends the constant, oh, they don't really need it, or it's just mismanagement. We actually have it in front of us. And I use Illinois as an example because they just did this. They did the heavy lifting. They just instituted a new funding formula. How they did it is they looked at 27 essential elements of an education. You know, these are just a few, reading interventionists, student activities, full-day K, special education, smaller class sizes, all these different things that they considered in the formula. That basic support or that per pupil funding was then modified by how many special ed students are in your district, or, you know, what kind of transportation do you need, or are there, you know, ELL students or at-risk students that will have additional cost? And then they looked at regional inflation. That's my big thing, inflation. They actually said, well, what's the actual inflation rates for these districts so we can account for that? Another important feature that, when we talked to superintendents, they really liked is that it mandated dialogue between the Department of Ed and the districts. There wasn't surprises. You know, often you get handed down how much money your board's getting or your district's getting, and it's a surprise. It might even be incorrect. Just a hypothetical there. But, you know, it mandates that communication. It's checks and balances. If there's some other expense that's coming up in the district, you can actually say, hey, I know you decided this, but we actually have an influx of students coming in, or we have this going on, and it'll all count for that. There was a commitment in Illinois to have no district receive less funds under the new formula. This hold harmless was critical. It was the only way to get the whole state on board with this. And this is going to be critical here too because they're already having conversations on where to shift the money around. We don't want them to shift money around. We want it to be an increase. So this is really critical. And there's, of course, a focus on evidence and best practices. So, you know, how many counselors should be in a school? You know, if you have 500 students in a school, what do they need? What kind of services do they need?
So Illinois is just one of, well, almost every other state that's tackling this somehow. Many states are tackling it because there was litigation involved. We are one of four, three states that have not been sued for adequacy. Four or for equity? For equity. But oftentimes, there's an alliance or a coalition like ours. So you can see that there's one in Utah, Arizona, Illinois, and other states where there is a statewide community stake in making this happen. And these are some of our members to date. We are excited to announce that Nevada PTA just signed their resolution today, so we get to add their logo. And as we do our state tour, we get to add more and more. And, oh, and White Pine. And I'm just excited to be a force to be reckoned with this session.
Trustees, any questions? Well, I know we're very grateful for the work you're doing, and many of us have seen the, how do you pronounce the study?
Augenblick.
Yes, that one. But it's very powerful to have that data. It's not just whining an opinion. There is data that shows this is what the gap is between what students deserve and what they're currently getting. So I think the more of that we can do, the better, and I'm very excited and very, very grateful for the work that you're doing. Trustee Taylor.
Thank you, Madam President. And again, just thank you. It's time for us to go to work on this wholeheartedly. My question would be, what kind of response have you gotten? I saw where you presented to the interim education committee. What are you getting kind of politically, if you will, you know, from those that can really make some things happen?
It's been, I'd say at this point, it's been a good reaction. You know, it's ahead of election, so most people are on board with education, which is a good thing. You know, it's maintaining that after they're elected. But, you know, we know that there are some folks, we know that Dr. Canavero in particular is working on transitioning to a cost-based funding model. And we know that Senator Dennis might be working with him on that and may be proposing a bill. Again, you know, we really want to make sure that, you know, it's great that they're doing that, but we want to make sure that the whole state is involved in that process. I guess what makes me a little bit nervous is when I hear folks, legislators, say, oh, we're not going to grow the pie. We're just going to split things up differently. And I've heard that a couple times, and that lets me know there's work to be done. But, you know, having them understand that there are budget issues up north is really, really critical to that process. So I'd say the reception's been good. We presented to the Legislative Committee on Education. They signed a resolution to send a letter to the governor talking about supplementing using marijuana and IP-1 dollars, which I think is a good start. I mean, that's part of, that's a budget process. But, you know, we have to keep the pressure on because, you know, like I said, it can go, you know, I don't want to say south again, but it can go south really fast if we're not vigilant about it, so.
We did have a presentation earlier today, a budget workshop, and there was a great graphic that our folks provided, which showed the declining percentage that public education is as a percent of the budget for the state. And it's very, that was one of the most powerful things I saw today, was that despite all of this additional categorical funding, as you said, it flows out the bottom. And that is, it's just graphic evidence, and I know they would share that chart with you because it's really, really powerful. Yes, Vice President Raymond.
Thank you for coming and including us on your tour of Nevada. I imagine, well, I would say that, you know, I want to see the general fund number increase and then, you know, have those marijuana dollars and the IP number increase or at least stay the same, but supplementing the general fund at a different rate. So I imagine the state would argue that there isn't extra money to put into the general fund. What's your response to that, or how, I mean, have you done any research to convince them that there is money and it should go to education?
Well, from what I understand, there is a budget surplus right now. But I guess our response to that is normally, look, IP-1, there were teachers, there were parents going around the state, knocking on doors, making sure that that passed. You know, same thing with marijuana. Marijuana was sold to the public, that it was going to increase funds for public schools. It's time for those other agencies to go knock on doors, you know? So when we hear that, well, there might be a hole to fill, and, you know, we're not sure how we're going to do that, that's really not, we can't be asked again to go out and find those funds. You know, we did that hard work. So that's our response. And we know that, you know, it's not going to appease everyone. There is still a hole to fill, but, you know, my big fear is they say, well, why don't you guys go advocate for a new tax? And then that, again, you know, go into the DSA and then, you know, come out the bottom. So we really want to press folks on making these funds work how they were intended.
I think too, I think we all need to force them to look at the bigger picture. You know, when you have people that are running for election every two years or every four years, our long-term strategy is that we are spending so much money on the back end because we're not investing in our children and in a successful citizenry. And we're going to continue to do that exponentially if we don't swing the pendulum back the other way. The fact that we fund a juvenile inmate eight times the amount of our state guaranteed money sickens me. And so we need to get them to look at what the future of our state is, not just their own future in an election, but the future of our state and our children and how they're going to change that. So whether the, you know, the big conversation in the next session is going to be Medicaid or other Health and Human Services or prisons, all of that depends on us investing in our little seeds.
When you talk to them and they say "we," who do they mean by "we"? Or are they talking specifically about them? I want this, but you said they say "we" want to pass this and that.
Sorry, could you bring me the questions already?
When you're talking, you're bringing up that you go to these legislators and things, and they say "we." Are they talking about themselves, or is it the whole group?
I think they're talking about themselves. I don't know if they're speaking on behalf of the whole group. And, you know, it's been different with different legislators. We have some that have been really like, yeah, you're absolutely right. This has been a problem. And then we have others that, you know, we have some that challenge, you know, that marijuana money gets supplanted or that IP-1 gets supplanted. And, you know, so we can show them, if there's a chart that I made, that it's the state support of the DSA goes down as other new revenue sources go up. So, I mean, you can, it's really plain to see, but I think, I think a lot of it with legislators is they just, they don't fundamentally know these things. I mean, I think, you know, and I think it's just educating them. It's not that they're bad people or they don't care about kids. I think it's really just kind of being very transparent and really trying to explain those things in a way that they can really understand and take with them as they go to session.
You know, when I was in high school, it was before '67, but I won't, but anyway, the debate question for all the contests and stuff was what's the right way to fund education? That's how far, you know, the pre-'60, these questions were, and they came up with this, and it never did work. And what the cost of education back in '67 are completely different now. You know, because we didn't have a paved parking lot. We didn't have a lot of the things that are required now. And so the expenses by unfunded mandates by both the feds and the state, those weren't happening back then. So the Nevada plan did not, it covered the needs of schools at that time. But now, it doesn't even come close. It doesn't even come close to solving the problems that individual children have. And for transportation and everything, it's really tough. And all of the, I don't care if it's a kid in Boulder City or a kid in Elko, the basic problems are the same. That kid needs the tools to be successful in life. I don't care where they are, and I don't care who they are. They need the basic tools. And it sounds like you kind of got a deal going here. Who's funding this movement? You probably need funds to do this too.
Well, I mean, we're a coalition, so everybody's funded a little bit differently just as an individual member. We actually don't have, for Fund Our Future, we're not, you know, we don't raise money or anything like that. We just kind of pull together our resources from different organizations. So like E&amp;N is funded through the Rogers Foundation. And actually, Hope, you want to talk about Hope a little bit?
Yeah, Hope, we sell fund. We're parents that sell fund. And for a while, we really liked that because we weren't beholden to anybody else's agenda, and it was just students, all students that were our agenda. And so we're going to continue to sell fund.
You're really not in the fundraising, going to lead companies and saying, will you support us? And they give you a donation, but they'd like to have geography not taught in the schools or something like that. So you have a clean slate.
Yeah.
And you have, you're looking at several different states and different plans, and then are you going to compile something and get a bill draft for what you feel is the answer to correcting the Nevada plan?
You like read our minds. That's exactly what we're doing. That's exactly what we're doing. We're putting, and that's why Michaela, so you want to talk a little bit about your work in other states and?
So I actually previously worked for Augenblick Polish Associates. So I did school funding states. I sat on the commission in Rhode Island. I did Maryland, Wyoming, Michigan, Texas. So I've done it in a bunch of states. And so I got to come back here and see the other side of it. And so what APA does is they create an adequacy study, which looks at what is the adequate amount of dollars for all students to meet state standards? And there's multiple approaches to doing that. There's cost-based, there's PJ, there's successful schools. And so what we've seen is trying to take some of those ideas from schools that have been really successful. Wyoming implements a solely class-based formula. Maryland does a completely adequate-based formula for PJ. So taking those ideas and trying to figure out how do you then create a base amount that then also provides weight? So at-risk weight, EL weight, district weights, depending on size, all of those different adequacy things that are needed. And so then getting together and creating a bill that would then create a formula that is much more equitable and adequate for all students. Not saying you need to be there right away, and states take 10 to 15 years to get there, but they create a plan in which to get there and how you create funding, how you go through the process. And so I've seen that done in multiple states.
So then, I'm sorry. So then what you're really doing is you're going to catch a formula, come up with a formula that also contains a long-range plan.
Yes. So it would be, a lot of states, well, you'll never get to a complete formula for a couple years. It takes a while to get there. So you could start with a successful schools number, and in the state it'd be like 66% of the kids are successful. So that's not a great number, but it's a starting point. And then you try to get up to the 98% success rate, and so.
Well, you know, the best thing you guys got going for you.
Exactly.
That's what it is. Here's the money for special ed. This is for this, that. And so I commend you. I commend you for donating your time and resources to make it equitable for every student, no matter where they are or what they need. Because, you know, Carson has agriculture in their high school. Another one has, Sparks has manufacturing. So all these things.
And speaking of Carson, they have to go to Carson right now.
Oh, well, the new. Oh, well, the new, there's a new North Truckee deal that you can get from Real Fast. Go try it, it's nice.
But we, yeah, we all do, thank you. Trustee Frankel?
Well, I think this is a great effort and I appreciate the coalition and the work and the vision behind it and the long-term vision as well. I think it's much needed and so I'm comfortable with it and ready to make a motion if.
We have public comment, yes, okay. Yep. Yes, Mr. Clark?
Richard Clark?
Hi, my name is Richard Clark. I'm a teacher at Reno High School. I come here representing myself, but I'm also a parent of two Washoe County School District students. My wife is a teacher. My mother-in-law is a teacher. My brother-in-law is a teacher. I'm the department chair. I have friends throughout the district and I want to speak in favor of this because, and I was going to stay after, but it works so well. I want a heat warning to the, to the school board that there is a problem facing them and it's not a funding thing. It's going to be a teacher shortage thing. And the amount of work facing teachers right now is to a point where this summer is the first time I consider not coming back. That I have colleagues who are, who are some of the best teachers in the state who are considering not coming back. And it's because of the things that don't have to do with teaching. ASR reports, digital days. We have so many things on our plate other than teaching that we don't have time to teach, to make phone calls, to take care of the kids in our classrooms. And that has to do with teachers teaching on their preps, lack of subs in the districts where we're subbing on our preps. The preparation time is overwhelming. And as, as I got recognized earlier for a program I'm very proud of, I understand the importance of education, of public education in our schools and in our, in our systems. And, and if, if Washoe County still continues to grow the way it is, it's going to face an issue of not having teachers to teach the kids of the parents who are moving here for the jobs that the other branches of government are bringing in. And so with that, I want to thank you guys so much for your work and effort because it is so important to what, what we need to help the kids who are in our classrooms every day, which is the purpose for us to, to be in a classroom. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Do you have another public comment?
Margaret Martini.
Welcome, Ms. Martini.
Margaret Martini, thank you. In listening to all of this, I never did I hear anything about administration. Our Washoe County School District is so hugely administration-heavy that you cannot pay the teachers. And then you do things like, let's do Common Core. Whoa, that sounded like a good idea. And pretty soon we have Common Core. And did anyone check with the teachers to see how much more time it was going to take to do the Common Core procedure? When they really look at what they were educated in and how to teach the kids? I mean, we all learned pretty much the same way and I think we're all fairly intelligent here. Did we have Common Core? No, not at all. So then you sit here as a board and you do all of these programs and you don't think about the impact to the teachers. The teachers that we have, for the most part, that I've been involved with, with my children's education are dedicated. They're hardworking. They care. And then the ones that I talk to now that are stuck with these stupid programs that you guys have implemented, they say, we can't teach. We can't teach to the individual kids. We have this program that we have to deal with and it's not to the benefit of the children. They're not taking into consideration the children. And then you spend all this money on administration and these crazy programs that aren't even education-oriented and, and you wonder why, like this gentleman, why the teachers are leaving? If I were a teacher, I'd leave too. You know, you don't pay them enough to, to put up with this stuff. And I really agree that, you know, you guys are going to have a big problem in getting and keeping teachers because of the way this district is run. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Martini. And just for the record, our administrators per student is about 144 students per administrator in Nevada. The average is about 120 students per administrator and national average is about 30 students per administrator. So we are more than four times heavier student loads per administrator than the national average. So just to correct that for the record.
Yeah, and I just want to add, you know, there's the statement that we've implemented all these programs. Most of the programs are implemented, have been mandated by the state. The district has not went out on a ledge and said, we're going to do this and be innovative because of the amount of accountability we have toward the state and federal. So there are no basic new programs that we have hired, implemented that was districted on. Now, the district did buy new textbooks because we do believe that teachers need material to teach and we had antiquated textbooks. But that's not a program. That is a tool to teach, which is two different things. So I want to be clear to the public about that around this board and implement.
Thank you. So I know we have trustees that are anxious to make a motion on this. I think I heard from trustee Frankel first. Sorry, Dr. Taylor. Trustee Frankel, you wanted to make a motion?
For the students of Washoe County, I move that the Board of Trustees adopts the Washoe County School District Board Resolution 18-007, a resolution to support quality education for all Nevada public students.
Thank you. Motion by trustee Frankel, second by trustee Dr. Taylor. Is any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Unanimously supported. Thank you all so much and thank you for your entire coalition. You can put our logo on your, your chart. All right, safe drive. Be careful going to Carson. I know you're in a hurry. Thank you so much. Okay, we're on to item 3.06, possible action to adopt Washoe County School District Board Resolution 18-008, a resolution in support of Invest in Education Nevada Classrooms, blah, blah, blah. Superintendent Davis, are you?
Finally, we are here with the final document. We've been coming to you over the last six months, talking about the work we've been doing with the other 16 superintendents in the county to come up with a document that we will all take and use common language. So the document is finished and want to, of course, thank Washoe doing the legwork, putting it together and thank Clark for doing the legwork on paying for the actual printing of the document. It has been a team effort with Clark County and Washoe County School District on this venture and so we're super excited to have Lindsay come with you with a actual final copy.
Welcome, Lindsay, and, and thank you to everybody who worked on this.
Thank you, President Simon Holland and Superintendent Davis. I know I'm the last thing standing between you and airplane flights and dinner and I promise I'm going to be even quicker than I normally am, but I'm really excited to be here to present this resolution about Invest of 2019. Just as a little bit of context, the last time we adopted Invest was in February, actually, like right in, sort of after the legislative session started. So to the extent we're here ahead of time, working together across the state to have common language is really exciting. And I just wanted to do a little show and tell because with our friends in Clark County, I've been able to obtain a physical copy of every version of Invest. So the first one was in 2003. Just to give you a little historical, 2005, 2007, 2009, a little different, a little more user-friendly and colorful, 2011, 2013. This is the 10th anniversary. 2015, 2017, and now here we are in 2019. And it's fun to go back and kind of look through some of the documents to see that it's almost exactly the same, but still a good common talking points. I just wanted to tell a little bit of the story, really not very much, but the idea around this document really coalesced around what Nevada's classrooms need. And so that's kind of the subtitle of this document is around what every classroom needs in Nevada. So that's kind of the introduction. You'll see some basically foundations of learning. And then it was really lovely to hear you talk about the chart that talks about the percentage of state contribution because that's on, these aren't page numbered, but that is a main tenet of Invest here. And then also I love the talking about inflation. I happen to be an economics geek too, so I had to geek out on inflation. But also a little bit of context about what it would have looked like had we adjusted for even just a 2% inflationary factor. So some good charts in there. Same thing, this is one of my favorite charts in talking with our legislators is about how we're receiving even less property taxes now than we were in 2009 for education and to the extent our costs have not necessarily fallen. And then another one that I find really helpful is the chart at the back of the document that talks about the disconnect. I think Amanda's going to be my new best friend with her joke about the, how the state hands down the funding formula number. But the idea that we are adopting as a school district budgets long before the legislative session is over and, and how frustrating that is for us to be in that reactive type of position. And so I love what they had to say. I think our Invest document is in almost perfect alignment with the tenants that you heard from Fund Our Future, what we're hearing from other districts across the state, from the Nevada PTA. So I do love their grassroots nature. I love how they represent lots of different things. We did used to have that parent group in Washoe County called Parent Leaders for Education. It's not as prominent as it used to be, but I think this group can really provide that infrastructure that to engage parents in Washoe County in this conversation as well. So I'm not going to read it to you, but we're here today to ask for your adoption of the resolution to sign off on this Invest document, which I think is going to be really powerful for us going into a 2019 legislative session. I'll leave it at that.
All right, questions for Lindsay? Yes, were you going to say something? Yes, Mr. Mayor?
I'll move for approval of item 3.06 as outlined by staff.
I second.
All right, motion by Mr. Mayor, second by Dr. Taylor. Is any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Let this be the year. Let this be the time. Yeah, save all that publication money. Great, thanks, Lindsay. I know there will be some rocky, you know, whitewater or whatever the analogy should be ahead of us. Okay, so we are at board reports. Do any board members want to make some reports? Yeah.
I just want to mention one thing amidst many things I've been doing. I want to thank Samantha and Kristen for assistance with the talk with the trustees that we held at Drake. Had a great turnout of a lot, mostly staff and a few parents from different parts of the community as well. And I think it went really well and I appreciated Kristen being there to answer some of the tougher questions. So that's what I wanted to share.
Okay, great, all right. Others? Yes, Mrs. Raymond?
I'll just focus on the Nevada Family Engagement Summit, which was this weekend put on by the Nevada Department of Education, but since it was being hosted up here in Reno, the Washoe County School District really took on a large part of the work. Delisa Crane and her office and I think just all the leadership staff were highly involved and I thought it was a great conference. There were a lot of parents in attendance and a lot of educators. It was a Saturday cafe, so I know there are a lot of teachers there. And I attended four great sessions and learned a lot. And the keynote speaker, Dr. Victor Rios, was also wonderful and, and kind of going back to Tiffany Ballance, that conversation around equity and family engagement brought those two together and it was in a really powerful way.
And I also enjoyed the Family Engagement Summit. Great, great job by the team putting that on, so thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, I visited Vaughn Middle School, Worcester High School, Galena High School, Pleasant Valley, Sparks High School, Mitchell Elementary, Reno High School, and Gom Elementary School. And I was pleased to have a guest join me for the Sparks High Football Game Friday. And, you know, those little things mean a lot. And I'm still getting people saying, oh, it was so nice that she was there with, she put a sticker on her cheek. But those things you don't pay for and there's a lot of public relations for that, so. Thank you.
Well, thank you for flying the flag for the board at so many school visits, Mr. Mayor. Everybody appreciates that throughout the district. We just hear about it all the time, about how much people appreciate your personal touch and your attention, so thank you. Anyone else for board reports? Okay, superintendent report?
We've been all been super busy. We've had so many activities last week, we can't keep up with all the things, not just in our district, but in our community. So I want to thank the staff for taking, taking over some of those outside activities, outside of work. But ultimately it goes back to the work we do with our students and we had a wonderful week of school visits with trustee Malina and John at Reno High School and we did visit the We the People class that day. But I'm just going to say that John has met his match at Mitchell. If you get a chance to go to Mitchell Elementary School and get the tour from Nick, you will be blown away. And he, he kind of put John in his place. So good things happening in our school, good things happening with our work as we look at our strategic plan, so we're excited about where this year's going to go.
Great, thank you, Sue. Future agenda item requests? We have one, Dr. Taylor. We were going to ask for an agenda item to talk about what's our management plan for some best practices on how we can support successful transition for, for all of these fifth graders who are going to be going to middle schools? Can we develop a sort of a district-wide program? We know there's some great things going on in individual schools for transitioning those kids and can we, can we develop some? And can we hear about it? If you've already got the plan, can we hear about it so that we can respond to the, the parents who are concerned about that transition? So that would be a request.
Thank you for remembering that, Madam President. I was going to ask for a review of the legal budget. I thought that's what we were looking for.
Oh, Neil, I'm sorry.
The last time today.
Did you have something else, trustee Frankel? Okay, do we have public comment?
Margaret Martini.
Okay.
John Appolito.
My name is John Appolito. I'm with Protect Nevada Children. I did notice the district policy used to be, we don't reply to public comments. When did that change? Last week, a Nevada state legislator told me, quote, "I already took my kids out of Edmodo," end quote. My response was, quote, "Don't other parents deserve to know what you know that caused you to take them out of Edmodo?" End quote. The IT guy who spoke about three hours ago told me he was going to email me as soon as he got back to his office. I thought he worked in this building. In addition to other questions, I've been asking for a month to meet with someone like this surprised gentleman who's, I've never seen at a meeting before and I've been coming 10 years. The question is, quote, "Why won't the district allow parents to opt their children out of district email?" Of course, that's for those of us who will not be using district platforms or the free edtech products. You've already proven you can't keep the usernames, emails, hash passwords safe. Now, we do probably agree with that gentleman on a couple of things. One, we know the student IDs were stolen. And two, so far, we, it took him a long time to say it. We know the student IDs were stolen. So far, we don't think anyone has used those student IDs to hack Infinite Campus or Sane yet. We all know, it's just a matter of time. Some of us just won't say it out loud before Infinite Campus or Sane is breached, especially since the Chinese company now owns all the Edmodo data, including those very rich profiles. It should not be your choice when kids get free edtech products or email addresses. There's going to be more data breaches, more merges, more companies will sold. That Chinese company that bought Edmodo, if they're paying attention, they will buy ClassDojo next. They'll have the richest profiles on US children ever. I don't know how you guys could sleep at night. Parents deserve to know that data is in the hands of the Chinese. One of your teachers just posted yesterday on our Facebook page, I hope this doesn't get her in trouble, but she posted it, quote, "Here's what one of, quote, 'If I had less students, I have 31, or another grown-up in the room, I wouldn't even use technology. I work for a Title I school. My students do not know how to behave or work independently. It is sad, but for now, I rely on technology to keep some kids busy while I teach small groups of kids.'" It kind of goes in line with what these other two teachers said. Technology, let us opt out of it. We don't want it. Some of us will never use it. Don't make it. Don't make it difficult. Educate parents. Let them decide. The problem will take care of itself if you educate parents."
Thank you, Mr. Appolito. Is there any other public comment? Okay, well, hearing none, our next meeting will be on 20, I'm sorry, October 9th will be our next meeting, and there will be a spring break or a fall break, so yeah, enjoy the break, and we'll see everybody in October. Thank you.